Okay, we're gonna gavel in. It is literally 8:31. Whoop, just turned to 8:32. And at this time, I would call for the invocation. And we do have a special guest here this morning. Good morning. We'll ask all to rise for the invocation. Please remain standing after the invocation as we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and also to our Texas flags. Welcome.
Yes, I'm gonna just read some verses.
Thank you.
And then I'm gonna start the supplication, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. So in the name of Allah, in the name of God, most gracious, most merciful, all praise is due to God. We praise Him and we seek His help. We seek His forgiveness. We seek refuge in Him from the evil within ourselves and our evil deeds. Whomsoever God guides will never be lead astray. And whomsoever God leaves astray, no one can guide. I bear witness that there is no God except Him. And I bear witness that Muhammad, Jesus, Moses, Ibrahim are messengers of God. So we ask God, we ask God to bless this Catherine. We ask Him to protect us. Oh God, we ask You to exalt our fame, lighten our burden, purify our heart, and forgive our sins, and high and reward us with a high rank in, in the gardens. Bless us in the, in our sights, in our hearing, in our bodies, in our lives, in our family, and, and work. Oh God, accept our deeds and accept our wishes. Oh God, we ask You. We seek refuge in You against difficulties, calamities, troubles, oppressions, and problems. Oh God, You are our Lord. There is none worthy of worship but You. You Creator, created us. We keep Your covenant and our pledge to You so far as we are able. We seek refuge in You from the evil off we have done. We admit to Your blessings upon us. We admit to our misdeeds. Forgive us, for there is none who may forgive sins but You. We pray, we pray to God in heavens alone, asking Him for love, to keep us safe and warm, to keep us away from harm. Amin. Thank you.
At this time for the clerk, as I said, it was 8:32 when we started. We're here at Nuasis County Commissioners' courtroom, at Nuasis County Courthouse. It's May 11th, 2022. As the presiding officer, I have certified that all commissioners are present and therefore a quorum has been established. At this time, I'll look for announcement on disclosure of conflicts of interest. These are any conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with items on this agenda shall be declared at this time. Are there any members that, of the court that need to declare? Okay. Seeing that I have no disclosure, I have no conflicts of interest, at this time, you are always welcome if you discover later in the meeting that there is a conflict of interest, that you can disclose them at that time. The safety briefing, Rebecca, if you would give us, as they say, a brief brief?
Yes, ma'am.
I started briefing.
We want no people here for...
Yes, sir. As soon as we do this, I'm gonna get to your table.
I just want them to wait.
I understand. Soon as...
Good morning, Judge.
Yes.
Commissioners and attendees. Our safety briefing for today, May 11th, is being held in the Nuasis County Court, Commissioners' courtroom. The restrooms are located on the right-hand side of the third-floor atrium, past the Human Resources Office. There is a fire extinguisher located at the rear of the courtroom, and also five additional fire extinguishers located throughout the atrium area. Bleed control stations are on every floor. In the event of a cardiac emergency, an AED is located on the right wall next to the Human Resources Office. Participant for today who will be responsible for dialing 911 will be Connie. In the event of evacuation, our egress route will be slowly down, the atrium stairs proceeding out the doors, and located on the LePans side of the courthouse, and assembled in the parking lot across the street. It is important to stay together. Should there be a need to shelter in place, depending upon the severity of the shelter in place, the courtroom double doors will be secured and remain secure until given further instructions from the Nuasis County Sheriff's Office or other law enforcement agencies. And our guest sanitizer for the day will be Michael, and thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Before we move to public comment, in the interest of courtesy, it's come to our attention as we walked into the courtroom that there is a commissioner who wishes to table an item, and so that you do not have to wait to hear that table. I will, I will consider that at this time. The item is Commissioner Gonzalez.
Is the game room item?
That's 3A1. And if you would state your, your reason so that they would understand?
Well, Judge, I think, I, I wouldn't be able to really be truthful in what I decide because I haven't read it. I got it about 3:00 PM yesterday, and we've got a lot of things we have to prepare for this meeting, and I just, I'm not ready for it. And I think there's a couple items that I know that might probably not in there. So I'm just making a motion that we table it to the next meeting.
For two weeks. You mean till the next meeting?
Till the next meeting.
Second.
Okay, so the motion and the second, and the call, call for discussion. So in case, for those of you that are online, the rationale was that we received these documents at 3:00 PM. Commissioner Gonzalez has not had the time to, to look them over. I do want to just ask the county attorney if they accurately, if she believes they accurately represent all that we discussed and all the directives that were put together. If there are any new ones, maybe that would be good to bring to anybody's attention at this time.
There are no new ones in there, and with each, we provided a change log so that the changes that were voted on are highlighted for you to see in the document. It does look different formatting-wise, so I know that can be a challenge, but there are some comments that I have received from the people here for public comment that might need to go into it, but those are not into it at this point.
Okay, all right. There's a motion and a second, and all those in favor of delaying for the last, for the next two weeks signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm ready. Item, the next item that we need to recognize is the safe, the public comment, and I have it in front of me. I, I need to tell you guys for housekeeping that there is a very important ceremony that's happening on the LePans side of the, sorry, the Leopard side of our courthouse at our Fallen Heroes Memorial in honor of our Law Enforcement Memorial Week. And so our intention is to attend that ceremony and to take a recess at 9:00 AM. We will return here at 10:00 AM for the clerk, and I may, if we can, try to break like five minutes before nine so that there is ample time for those of us that need a little extra time to make it from the third floor out to the Leopard side and find a seat to do so. I'll start this morning with, with JJ DeLaCerda. And Commissioner, did you want to sign up for public comment?
No, I just had a table also.
All right, I think it's, we can take it.
I'll wait if you want to do public comment, I'm fine.
I'll tell you what, before we go to nine, I'll bring it back.
That's fine.
All right.
Just letting you know.
Mr. DeLaCerda. JJ, our court recognizes you and, and you are our Veteran Service Officer. Welcome.
Morning, Judge and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here with Mr. Pat Simon from Chris Six, and we'd like to present to you a, a program which originated from the Veterans Roundtable Radio Show two weeks ago. About two weeks ago, correct? And so this is, the program is called the Flag for Flag Program. Essentially, what we would like to do is go out into the community, and for those that have a frayed or tattered flag, we'd like to replace that flag for free. And this is, it'll be from June the, we actually just changed that. It's June the 10th through the 13th, and we'll have those days. We'll have 12 different locations throughout the Coastal Bend, not just Nuasis County. Some of those locations include Claybrook County VSO, Jim Wells County VSO, San Pat VSO. So we're gonna put a list together as far as the locations to drop off and pick up a flag. And so we'd like to do that in preparation for Flag Day this year. As soon as those flags are picked up on the 13th, we will gather them, take them to the Coastal Bend State Veteran Cemetery so that we can do a flag retirement ceremony there at 10:00 AM on the 14th of June. I'll kick this over to Cat, Pat, for, for more comments, but just wanted to introduce.
Thank you.
Thank you, JJ. Good morning, everyone. I am Pat Simon, and I am a proud veteran of the United States Army. I served 30 years. I served in combat over in Iraq in 2009, wrapped things up in 2018. So I stand before you, and I appreciate this time. JJ mentioned our Flag for a Flag Program. It was kind of fun how it all came together when we were on the radio show, and Judge, you were there, JJ was there, Dotson Lewis, our Korean War veteran and the host of the show, and also Jerry Plemons, another veteran. And we started talking about the flag retirement area at the Coastal Bend State Veteran Cemetery, and JJ had mentioned how proud he was that that has been restored out there. And so I asked him, I said, hey, JJ, do we have a flag exchange program here to where you can drop off your old, tattered American flag and get a brand-new flag in its place? And he says, no. And I said, well, let's talk about this. So we talked it through, as you recall, and so I said, well, why don't we call it Flag for a Flag? And everybody's like, yeah, let's do this. And so we kept talking about it. And to JJ's point earlier, that became a movement, and that's what we want it to be. Because as we know, around the Coastal Bend, the environmental conditions with the windy conditions out there, and it, it tatters our American flags a lot faster. And so we thought, wouldn't this be a great opportunity for us to step forward, public-private partnership, Chris Six News, along with some sponsors, Bell Furniture, and also Mike Shaw Toyota, and Mike Shaw being a veteran himself from Vietnam? And so we thought, let's all get together, and let's come up with something positive for our community, right? To continue to have this legacy of waving that American flag, that legacy of being preserved in this special way, where we exchange a brand-new flag for an old, tattered flag. So we are on board with this program. Chris Six will provide some flags. Our sponsors will provide flags, and we're hoping that Nuasis County would join in with our parent company, Scripps, with our 501(c)( entities, and provide more flags. We're trying to go for 1,000 flags. We don't know what the, the need is here, but we're gonna try to go for 1,000 flags this first go-around, have all those flags at the locations that JJ just mentioned, and people can show up between the 10th of June and the 13th, because Flag Day is June 14th. And before now, most people thought Flag Day was just another day. We're gonna put Flag Day back on the map, okay? And so that's what we're trying to do here. We're gonna make it happen, and at the end, on June 14th, a great big retirement ceremony over at the State Veteran Cemetery. And then from there, we're gonna look to the next big opportunity, and that would be the 4th of July, to do this again, and do it again down the road. So I thank you for your time this morning. This is a great event, and we at Chris Six are so proud to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'll move straight to Luke Barrera. Good morning, Mr. Barrera.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to address the court.
And I'm just gonna ask you to get a little closer to that mic so that we can record better.
Is that better?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, my name is Luke Barrera. I'm the president of Rabolee I&amp;E Constructors. Rabolee has been in business since 1984 and has office in Cal Island since 1985. We employ 50 office personnel and 250 field electricians. On April the 7th of this year, after two addendums, Rabolee submitted our bid for the Nuasis County Generator Project. The bid was submitted via the portal provided by Nuasis County. The portal lists as late as today, April the 7th, 2:25 PM is the bid deadline. All information on the portal lists 2:25 as the bid deadline. Rabolee's bid was submitted at 2:08 PM. The portal is set up to not accept late bids. Since our bid was prior to 2:25, it was accepted and logged in. During the reading of the bids, however, it was determined that our submission was late and invalid. The two listed bidders submitted base bids of 3.2 million and 2.69 million respectively. Rabolee's bid was...
I think I'm gonna have to stop. Commit, County Attorney, do you think you could help out at this moment? Excuse me, Mr. Barrera, I so much want to hear you, but there are other rules at issue that I, I need to advise you of? Let me do this.
Just let Jenny do it.
Yeah, if you don't mind. I just want him to know, I'm very sorry for the interruption, but this is very important.
Giving out numbers like that at this point would be a violation of the process. I have spoken with Michael Robinson about this. He could not be here today, but that, it would not be appropriate to hear, to have that number put out, or any information about the bid at this point.
To have which number put out?
I'll, I'll tell you what I'm gonna do is, I'll, please continue, please, would it, normally during public comment, we do not engage, we just receive the comment, we listen intently, and then we try to find a way to get back to you to answer your comment. But I'm gonna ask you, in the, in your interest, and I truly mean this, in your legal interest, would you yield for just a moment? I'll give you a whole new three minutes, and you can start over again. I'd like to have the county attorney step outside with you and just advise you of certain, again, if, if you proceed, I'm afraid it will prejudice your interest at this point.
My, that's fine, ma'am. I appreciate the candor. My goal in being here was to bring this opportunity, or bring this to the forefront.
And I wanna hear that part. I just don't wanna have the, the violation, because there's no, there's not been a, an award consummated yet executed in final form.
Okay. I, I was reading numbers that were publicly read, though. That was the...
I think you're about to get to yours, though.
Correct.
Yeah, and we don't have any. Jenny, do you think you could help me?
Yes.
Mr. Barrera, would it be all right, sir, if I ask you to yield at this point? And I'll promise, I'll give you a cold, clean slate.
I'm, I'm good with that, ma'am.
Okay.
And I don't need to address the court at this time.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Ronnie Baker?
I know that we've tabled the item that I'm here to speak on, but I wanna thank all of you all for the efforts that you've made over the last several years to hear the concerns of the charities and nonprofits. This will actually give us an opportunity to send a couple of additional items from the Texas Lottery Commission that spell out a couple of things regarding amusement redemption machines. We will be forwarding that to you this week. It's been an exceptionally long journey. We have a, we still have a ways to go, but the charities, the nonprofits, all the people involved that work so tirelessly to make this community better sincerely appreciate your effort. We look forward to getting our comments for due consideration. Commissioner Gonzalez, we appreciate you raising your concern. This will give us an additional time, because there were a couple of things that did come in, and we will submit those for due consideration. Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Suzanne Taylor?
Real quickly, I, I too want to express my thanks. It'll be three years this October since the first time I came and talked to you about regulations for game rooms. Been a long time, it's been a long direction, and I think you guys have done a really good job, lady. I hate it when people say guys, and I'm in, in the group, so.
It's okay.
Appreciate all of you, and thanks again for taking the time to really look at this particular item and give it your all in making sure that everything is, continues to be legal in Nuasis County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. I'm gonna try to get through the next two, and then we will take our break. Eddie Heinem, Heinem Meyer?
We turned him around and sitting back to 7:10.
Okay. Margaret Baldwin? Thank you, Margaret.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Again, we want to say thank you so much. Thank you for tabling the item, Commissioner Gonzalez. And I want to reiterate what Ronnie said. We will get that to you as quickly as possible this week with the, the language for the Lottery Commission, so that can be considered also. Again, thank you so much for all your time in the time period. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we do recess from...
Judge, could I do my table?
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Judge, I would like to, let's see, it's regular agenda, 3A10, discuss and sort of the appointment, employment, evaluation of the Human Resource Director.
3A10.
Motion to table.
Motion to table, is there a second?
What is that?
There is a second.
310?
3A10. Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
No.
Okay. Two noes and three ayes. And are there any others from any of the floor to table?
Yes.
I'll be right with you.
To the next, I'm sorry, to the next meeting.
It's gonna be 3A15, the county clerk.
3A15. Yes, ma'am. Shkara, the county clerk asked for that as well. That is the canvas election returns. Is there a motion?
Is this table for table?
Yes. And just so you know, are they, on this one, I think she's gonna get us a date.
Correct.
This morning. I think she might post for Monday, is what I understand.
Okay.
Okay, I'll double check.
Yeah, I, I go with her to...
Okay. Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And I, I saw deputy...
Second?
The second was modest, no?
A, a motion.
Motion, and the second was?
Sure.
Don't mind?
No, I don't mind.
Commissioner Chesney, it's, it came from this side, but it was probably a multiple second.
Maybe you, did you second it?
What's that?
Or did I second it? I can't remember.
Second, yeah.
The canvas of the election, that the tabling, yeah. And just so the audience knows, that canvassing for those results are being tabled because the county clerk asked us to. They had not had a chance to meet. We're going to have that meeting forthcoming, and so please look for that to be done very swiftly. And then Deputy Vazquez?
One more public comment.
Comment? Yes, ma'am. If, if you can, I, I don't have your name. If you would announce your name, I would sign up here for you, and then I'll let you finish the, the filling out quickly. And then, again, it is my intention to ask for a very quick motion to recess from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM, so that we may run downstairs to be a part of the Regional Fallen Heroes Memorial Ceremony. Yes, ma'am.
I'll be as quick as possible.
Yes.
I'm sorry I didn't make my name on the list. My name is Angela Scirupa, and I'm here today because I wanted to make you aware, if you don't already know, of the burglaries that have been occurring out in Nuasis, rural Nuasis County, and the lack of assistance from the Nuasis County Sheriff's Office. The specific incidents I'm familiar with are the area concerning, the area that is concerning me is south of 44 between McKenzie Road and Calico Road. But I'm sure it's, you know, an issue throughout the rural Nuasis. My husband and I own property in the area, and one of, one of which we've been using as a business. I brought my notes, so if you'll bear with me. This specific property has been burglarized four times in the last seven months. Approximately $15,000 worth of equipment and items have been stolen. In the first three burglaries, three doors were pried open. The fourth burglary, they actually just threw a brick through the window, through the front window. Each time, I called Nuasis County Sheriff's Office to report the burglaries, and each time, the Nuasis County Sheriff's Officers responded completely unprepared to do their job. The officers arrived with a point and shoot camera and no equipment to process the scene. When I asked if they had processing kits, the officers were, advised, each advised me that they do not carry any equipment to process burglaries, that the Criminal Investigations Division is the one that carries the equipment, but they do not respond to burglaries. So for each burglary, I had to photograph, I had to process, and I had to identify evidence myself. And the reason for that, that gives me the experience and the knowledge to do that, is I am currently work as a crime scene investigator for a local law enforcement agency. I was also a crime scene investigator for other agencies, as long, also a forensic scientist for the Department of Public Safety. I worked in the crime laboratory. When the first burglary occurred, I provided the officer and the CID officers, and the CID officers with a possible suspect, and I, who had approached me, and a photograph, actually, who had approached me the day before the burglary. He was in a vehicle, wearing an Nuasis County ESD #3 shirt and carrying a radio. He began to ask me questions about my home, about my neighbors' homes, and when I ran him off, he advised me that he has a radio, he knows what goes on in the county, and he could hear everything, and that he would be back. So that brings us to burglaries two, three, and four. At the second burglary is where I located evidence. I located a cigarette butt, and I located a pocket knife. The next day, I appeared at the sheriff's office to speak with CID about the status of my previous burglary, because I had provided information, the plan for the evidence, and the lack of assistance of, from their officers. I encountered, I even provided them with photographs because the officer did not take any. At this meeting is where I found out that the suspect information from the first burglary was not even included in their investigation. The most help that they were able to provide me was to send an officer to the location to process the scene. The officer did not arrive, it took approximately two officer, two hours, I'm sorry, before the officer even arrived, and he had no idea where to begin. So I processed the scene myself. The next few, next few day, a few days later, I'm sorry, my husband and I were, we were called by a detective to come in and take a victim's statement. We both thought it was unusual for the nature of the crime to come in and do a victim's statement, but we, we did as asked. My husband and I were both separated. He was, I was, I answered questions first. They took my fingerprints, the same thing with my husband. When I asked her if she would be submitting the evidence to DPS, she said she did not believe that the knife belonged to the suspect, and that she, she was gonna process the evidence herself. When I informed her that depending on the process that she used to process the evidence for prints, she could damage any DNA, and she said, that's when she rolled her eyes at me and said, oh, I know, I know, I know what you do, I'll do it myself. That's when I told her that, oh, that's just when I stopped talking. I knew that she wasn't going to listen to anything I said. She was already, I guess, annoyed by me giving her suggestions, but having had worked at the DPS Crime Lab, I knew the best route to go. So at that point, we just both stopped talking, and we knew then, after we finished our interview with her, we knew then that my husband and I were both, we felt, I should say, my husband and I felt that we were both considered suspects as opposed to actual victims. And then after the meeting with the detective, I actually wrote a letter of grievance to the sheriff's office. I hand-delivered it to his office. That was at the end of December, and I have yet to receive a response. And because of my previous encounters... And because of my previous encounters with the Sheriff's Office, I haven't even begun to inquire anything about burglaries three or four. See, I've also spoken to many of my neighbors recently. The last burglary, our fourth burglary occurred about two weeks ago, approximately two weeks ago, maybe a little less than two weeks ago. My neighbors have also called to tell me that they've been burglarized. They have been drive-bys, people are driving by their homes and taking photos. They've also, most recently, a neighbor sent me a door, ring door cam video, and it's actually, it's a picture, it's a video of a young male who approached a home, rang the doorbell, it was about midnight, and he had a pistol in his waistband, his front waistband. I showed a couple of my law enforcement friends, and they did say that it was basically, had they opened the door, luckily no one was home, had they opened the door, it was basically a home invasion ready to happen. So, and actually, the people who lived there was an elderly, there were two elderly twin sisters. So they've since passed, but that's why the house is vacant. It doesn't look vacant, they do keep it up. I don't by any means expect the Oasis County Sheriff's Office to stand outside our homes, armed, waiting for a crime to happen, but I do expect them to do their job by being prepared when called upon, to be treated with respect and in a professional manner, and to be taken seriously when it does happen. I have worked in the forensic field for almost 20 years now, and if they were training, if they were treating me this way, someone who knows something about this type of, you know, crime incident, I can't even imagine what they're doing to ordinary, everyday citizens out there in the county. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You're welcome to leave any of your notes with the court manager. At this time, that concludes our public, does not conclude our public comment, but for those citizens, Commissioner Nandis, I acknowledge that you're on the list, but I'm gonna ask you to, to hold until we come back. Make the motion, please, for the recess and ask for the second. 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The time is, time is 9:04 a.m., and I'll see you on the cer, in the ceremony. And thank you again for your patience. So when we left off, we were actually not quite concluded with what's called public comment. So we had gone through the safety briefing, and we had had at least eight speakers, but there are two more left before we get to the resolutions and proclamations. I'll call upon Ms. Susie Saldana, and then followed by Commissioner Robert Hernandez. I'm sorry, I'm gaveling us in officially, you are so right, Lorenzo. It's 10:29 a.m. with the gavel. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Susie Luna Saldana. Judge, Commissioners, first of all, let me tell you, thank you for taking up the issues of the game room. It's certainly appreciated, especially from a consumer's part, and thank you for tabling it, because I felt that it was too short a time. And one of the issues that I think we need to clarify is every time I come here, I hear from the bingo people about how they've been working on this issue for three years. Well, they may have been working on the issue for three years, but we were not aware of it. So, there has to be some give and take in that information. I want to make clear that there's gambling going on in both issues. When people say, "I want to help bingo," think about the pull taps that they have. Think about the times that they do bingos at midnight. I want you to think about that, because one of my biggest concerns, and I just had a few minutes to go over the regulations, so I'm glad you tabled it, is the time. The time that you have put down. You cannot restrict the business from the times that it needs. And I'm looking at, people are saying there's crime going on in the game rooms, there's crimes going on everywhere you have. If that was the case, you'd be closing every bar in Corpus Christi. Because they stay open till 2:00 in the morning, and you do not restrict them. And when we have drunk drivers and people getting run over by drunk drivers, then are you, the persons that rent that place responsible for that drunk driver, or is the person that served them the beer responsible? You cannot hold some people accountable for some things and skip others. So, thank you for allowing us the time to go over the regulations. One of the things I'm gonna ask you to seriously consider is the fact that you need to make those times at least from 11:00 to 1:00 during the week, or 11:00 to 2:00 over weekends. Those are the issues that I want you to look at, because if you don't restrict other people, and you're restricting the game rooms, then you are actually discriminating against them. So, again, thank you for your time, and thank you for this issue. We will be back at the next board meeting, and please let us know approximately what time you're gonna take up the issue, so we can be here on time. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Hernandez, Commissioner.
Thank you, Judge, for allowing me the time. It's just that I got some calls last night after the news aired on the, on the article that concerned us, and people were upset, they were dissatisfied with Commissioner's Court. They just said that we should know better, we should have better control of what goes on with the employees here, the, talking about directors, we should be better informed. And they were just upset, they, they don't have any confidence in this Commissioner's Court, that's what I amounted to. They don't believe anything that we say, 'cause most likely, there's something in the back room that it's not supposed to be. And I know we've got a lot of people here, so I'm gonna just cut it short. And they did say, or one of them did say, that the bidding process, the way he's seen it done here, is wrong. We make too many mistakes that we end up trying to correct, but by that time, the damage has already been done to people, companies. So, we need to look into all those things, and make sure that our people that are in charge of those, those problems, they take a look at them and make sure everything is done correctly. I won't go into specifics about that, the bidding program, or what they were complaining about, but that's what, that's what it amounted to, Judge, and people just don't trust us anymore. Thank you.
In the court's agenda, there are, the next item we would take up would be the resolutions, proclamations, and orders, and we should start with Veterans Memorial Girls Basketball Team, and we're also going to invite the Veterans Memorial Boys Basketball Program, and we're gonna bring them in. This is item for the clerk, G1 and 2, but we thought since they represent two great sports programs from one great high school, we'd have them all in at the same time, and there are a lot of them, so you don't have to guess what sport is on the right side of the room here, or my right.
And the left.
And the left, too. Come on in, everyone, thank you. We certainly welcome you, and it's our honor to have you here. Thanks for your patience this morning. We have a very special resolution, and I'd like to direct your attention at this time to Ms. Belinda Inojosa Person, who will read, and then we'll have some conversation about it. Belinda?
Whereas the Veterans Memorial Girls Basketball Program, led by Coach Roy De La Peña, finished a successful 2022 season with a district record of 16-0 and an overall record of 37-3. The team also finished as District 35A two-time undefeated district champions, by district champions, area champions, regional quarterfinalist, regional semifinalist, and ranked ninth in the state according to the TGCA poll. Whereas players from the Veterans Memorial Girls Basketball Program were honored as follows. District Offensive MVP, Kaitlyn Brooks. District Defensive MVP, Gabrielle Arizmende. District Sixth Man, Kira Labors. District One Team, Tatiana Mosley, Alyssa Peña, and Mia De La Peña. District Two Team, Amanda Costa and Deshira Lister Brown. The entire varsity team was honored for All District Academic Team, and Senior Gabrielle Arizmende, McDonald's Invitational Tournament MVP. Rio Sports Live All-Star Members include Kaitlyn Brooks, Gabrielle Arizmende, Kira Labors, Mia De La Peña, Adlin Lopez, and Ella Ortiz. Kaitlyn Brooks, TABC All-State and All-Star Team. Gabrielle Arizmende, THSCA Second Team Academic All-State. Kaitlyn Brooks, THSCA Second Team All-State, Alyssa Peña. THSCA Honorable Mention All-State. Tatiana Mosley, TGCA All-Star Team. And All-State Kaitlyn Brooks, TGCA All-State District Coach of the Year, Coach Roy De La Peña. Whereas the Lady Eagles Basketball Program players include Seniors Gabrielle Arizmende, Kaitlyn Brooks, Kira Labors, and Alyssa Peña. Juniors Ashlyn Perez, Dee Brown, Tatiana Mosley, Yasmin Rodriguez, and Amanda Costa. Sophomores Mia De La Peña, Adlin Lopez, and Deshira Brown. Managers Alyssa Moser, Madison Dietrich, and McKenna Garcia. Student Trainer Jordan Goldbrunson. Coaching Staff for the Lady Eagles include Head Coach Roy De La Peña, Assistant Coaches Laney Virial, Adrian Nicholson, and Albert Galvane. Athletic Trainer Dalton Jennings. Athletic Coordinator Ben Bitner. Athletic Directors Brenda Marshall and Richard Okanas. Principal Scott Walker and Superintendent Dr. Roland Hernandez. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Commissioner's Court of Oasis County that the court hereby recognizes the Veterans Memorial Girls Basketball Team for their athletic accomplishments and achievements.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second, and we'll call for discussion, we'll ask Coach to come up. Not any old coach, as they say, but a very special one, not only in his person, in the way he conducts himself throughout the community, and, but of course, on the court, I, when I read that you had surpassed 700 career wins, I knew that I wanted to have this opportunity. But I know you, and you would not have wanted to shine a light on yourself, but rather on your great team. And so we welcome you here today. We're gonna invite you to make some comments, maybe have some of your captains, if they so choose, make comments. And then I bet there are many of us that want to wish all of them congratulations.
Thank you so much, this was awesome. Thank you for inviting us. Our girls played their hearts out, our, you know, we have a wonderful group of girls. The biggest award we got was Academic All District. All our players received that, so that's, that's one I'm so proud of, you know, and of course, the wins are real nice, but they're doing things on, at school and on the court. Seniors Gabby, Blondie, Labors, Alyssa. You know, if it wasn't for them, our, they, they ran the program, they're very, very educated, very smart, very nice, kind, thoughtful kids, and they, they fell into the program, loved it, and it made sure the younger kids did what they were supposed to, and that's how you win. Would y'all come up here, please?
I played for this team for my four years of high school, and growing physically, mentally, you know, with this group of girls was something special, and this year was one that, I mean, there was a chemistry like no other team I've ever played with before. It was really special, and I'm glad that it, we got as far as we did with this group.
I also played, I'm Kira Labors, for four years with this team, and as Gabby said, it was a really special year, 'cause we all bonded well together, and our season was good, and it was just fun playing with the girls.
How do you lower it a little bit?
You can adjust it, just tilt it.
There you go.
I'm just still... Okay. Hi, I'm Alyssa. I would just say that I am truly blessed to have the teammates that I did this year. Played with them since we were all growing up, so it just felt comfortable, and we just had to do what we had to do this year.
Hi, I'm Kaitlyn Brooks. These four years went by fast, but this is definitely the team that I'm gonna remember most, the bonds that we had, the chemistry that we had. It all started in the summer when we all played together in these select teams, and we didn't think we were gonna win versus these big select teams, but we did it as a school team, and I think that's what took us as far as we did this year.
Amazing. Coach, Commissioners?
Thank you, Judge. Judge, Commissioners, I, I would be remiss, and I'm gonna spend some time honoring the girls, but if I, if I don't give my friend Roy De La Peña a little bit, I don't, I don't know how many times, 700, how many wins do we have now?
Seven, seven, seven something.
Seven something? I, I don't even think I have that many in upward, so, you know, I, I want to say, you know, that, that's an amazing record, I, that does, that...
Do we forgive him for leaving Ray, do we?
Yeah, well, you know, about that, but, yeah, you know, you got a couple, two, three Ray alumni up here.
Three Ray alumni.
We're still holding that against you, but not real hard, because we, we, I don't represent Ray, I represent veterans, so I'm okay with that, and Commissioner Gonzalez and I now share veterans after the last redistricting, so he's, he wanted to be included in this too. So, Coach, you did a great job, as usual, you know, we're used to seeing the phenomenal program now, and I know veterans hadn't been to high school a long time, but, but y'all have set the mark. You know, you ladies have done an incredible job. For those of you who've been there four years, you're, you're used to winning, right? Not everybody gets to do what you get to do and be on a team like you get to be on, and, and the amazing success that you've had on, on the court and off the court is pretty staggering. You set the bar so high that the boys finally got here with y'all, so that's really pretty good, right? Come on, let's call it like it is, right? We got Coach White back, and here we are, right? I mean, so, so now that we got Coach White back, we're expecting, just like we do with Coach De La Peña, to see y'all both here every year.
Competition.
Because it, it's definitely an amazing achievement that y'all, that y'all have accomplished, and we so appreciate you being here, we appreciate you taking the time. Sorry we were a little late, but as Judge explained, we had a very important ceremony out there, and figure it's, as John Modas told me, it's the last month of school, y'all wouldn't mind missing a little more school, so, so if we'll, we delayed you a little bit, I'm sure you're not too heartbroken. But to, to also the parents, I want to just say, I know what a sacrifice it is, and I'm saying this to both sets of parents now, 'cause I don't want to repeat myself, and when the boys are up, but I know what a sacrifice it, it is to have an athlete, a student athlete, it's tough. It's tough on the families, it's tough on everybody, but you, you share in the success, you really do, for those of you who are here, and for those that aren't here, because I know what a sacrifice it is to, to get them here and to get them through school, and veterans is no easy place to get through academically. So, congratulations, ladies, you have, you have really made South Texas, Oasis County proud. We are so appreciative of, of everything you've done, and, and Coach, always, it's great to see you, and, and, like I said, it's just an expectation now, veterans with, with, with the ladies' side, and now with Coach White and these great boys with, what they've done, we'll talk a little bit about them. We expect to keep seeing y'all here every year, so congratulations.
Commissioners?
I just want to say, it's kind of a, it's a win situation here, win-win, and a better situation here. You know, Commissioner Chesney, it's always been your commissioner, shine the light and everything else. Now, there's a new commissioner in town, and we're gonna share the, the light, and, you know, hopefully we can do more things than veterans, you know, 'cause I, we expect better. And also, I, I just want to say that, you know, just not forget what really makes a team. You know, we have to have faith in God, for one. You know, two is, you gotta have good coaches, great coaches, and, and good players, right? They know how to discipline themselves, they know how to present themselves, they know how to represent their schools when they go play. Means a lot, that makes a team. But the whole team, it wouldn't be a team unless you have the parents. I'll tell you what, the parents is like putting the icing on the cake, because the parents are the main supporters, or the transporters, or the feeders that feed you, you know, twice probably, before the game and after the game. So, but anyway, I just want to say that it all, to make a good team, that's what it takes. Just not forget to continue to work together in a united manner, all right? Good luck, guys, guys who graduated and seniors, wish you the best. Education is the best thing you can have, nobody can take that away from you, so continue to do your education, all right? Number one, all right? God bless you.
Commissioner Modas?
Thanks, Judge. We can, I, having been on school board for CCISD, it's like having kids, right? You love them all equally and all the same, so it doesn't matter what precinct y'all fall in, y'all are still our team, represent Corpus Christi and Oasis County. I just don't get how Commissioner Chesney has all these strong basketball programs only in his precinct. I get to have Ray, so they have some good seasons every once in a while, I know, they've been good challengers to you, but I'm gonna make these comments to both teams. No, Commissioner Chesney does not have an opponent in November, 'cause I know the boys took a little slight to what, what you said earlier about them finally joining the girls, but girls, I've been watching y'all for years now, and I've seen and I've heard the stories about the team working through select ball and just going through the summer... about the team working through select ball and just going through the summer workouts and getting ready, long when y'all were middle school still, right Coach? I mean, I remember following them and my wife keeping me updated. And so we were excited to see this team develop and turn into what they were and really knew this was the year. And I was mentioning to Coach De La Peña walking in, it's like it just every year, one of our sports teams, no matter what sport it is, kind of get the shorter end of the stick just by the way the draw is in the playoff rounds. Because we know that had it been drawn properly, these girls would have been in the state finals, playing for the state finals, and a tough team that they fought up to the end, and the young men as well. But it just happens where where you live, sometimes you get paired with a really strong team a little bit earlier than what you wanted. And who knows what would have happened had you met them head on, just one-on-one, last two teams standing. But I'm so proud of y'all. Y'all represent our community well. And we know that not only athletics, but also academics. And so this will be my comments also to the young men. Guys, keep it up. We're proud of you. Y'all did great. It's exciting always to watch some great basketball. And X, congratulations on all your future endeavors. Good luck on the baseball side as well. So thank you all for being here. We're really proud of you.
Commissioner Hernandez, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you Judge. I just want to congratulate Memorial Veterans School. I think they represent Corpus Christi very well. And I can wait to see, hope they continue their education in college and hear them play for the college of their choice. But thank you very much the way you represent Corpus. And I got to end this, I'm also proud of the Moody Trojans baseball team. That's my alderman. So anyway, congratulations to y'all. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Coach, as you know, sports is such a metaphor for life. There is so many lessons to be learned, ladies, from all of the skillsets that your coach and all of his staff, and we want to congratulate you and your entire staff and your administration. I didn't know if there were anybody else that accompanied you here today, but we would be honored for you to introduce them if they are here. They couldn't. No worries. No worries. I just wanted to say that, you know, what makes a great team in basketball for me is a team that knows how to pass the ball. I mean, that's really the difference between the greats. That's what you guys do so well. I know that there are all-stars. I know that. In every team there are. But the best teams, the greatest teams, it really is that work ethic which you display and the ability to be, you know, selfless, right? Passing that ball to make that shot. And one of the great basketball players, I don't remember exactly who, maybe the guys might remember, always said, "You got to make them believe that even if you can't block every shot, that you might," right? And I think that for the love of the game that you have, and many of you are multi-tiered athletes, you play more than one sport, today is just a moment in time. You might wonder, "Why am I going to the courthouse?" Well, because this is the epicenter of the things that we believe in most sacredly. Law, justice, freedoms, veterans, all the things that that we want to say to you. We're so proud that you've come to this house because this is the house where equality reigns. And even in equality, there are those moments of excellence that make you really just go to the very top, and that's why you're here today. And I just want to let you know that it means a lot to us that you come, that your coach brings you, that your parents are here to support you. Thank you for showing all of us what excellence looks like. Thank you, Coach. Here's the best part, we've got a resolution for you after we do this. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Would you honor us with a photograph? We would love that.
Do the boys, and then we get them all at one time?
You think we can have a photo with all of them?
Well, I mean.
We might. We might be able to. Well, girls, if you would indulge us.
One at a time.
What we'll do is even even still, what we could do is all the photos at once. We'll try the girls first, then the boys, and if we could somehow get everybody together, that'd be fun. So we'll ask Belinda to move on to the resolution dealing with the Veterans Boys Basketball Program and all of their accomplishments.
Whereas the Veterans Memorial Boys Basketball Program, led by Coach Billy White Jr., finished a successful 2022 season with a district record of 15-1 and an overall record of 31-8. The team also finished as District 29 5A Champions, Bi-District Champions, Area Champions, Regional Quarterfinal Champions, and Regional Semi-finalist. Whereas the members of the Veterans Memorial Boys Basketball Program were honored as follows. Aiden Guerra, District 29 5A MVP; CJ Vella, District 29 5A Sixth Man of the Year; Cameron De La Peña, First Team All District; Jordan Hurd, First Team All District; Nate Reeves, Second Team All District; Quincy Lewis, Second Team All District; Xavier Pettis, Honorable Mention All District; Christian Sabzook, Honorable Mention All District; Coach Billy White Jr., District 29 5A Coach of the Year; Aiden Guerra, All Region Four Academic All District; Sam Ashley, Dylan Cochran, Cameron De La Peña, Roger Garcia, Roman Mendoza, Xavier Pettis, Nate Reeves, and Christian Sabzook; Xavier Pettis, First Team Academic All State; Cameron De La Peña, Honorable Mention Academic All State; and Nate Reeves, Honorable Mention Academic All State. Whereas the Veterans Memorial Eagles Basketball Program players include seniors Cameron De La Peña, Roger Garcia, Aiden Guerra, Nate Reeves, and Xavier Pettis; juniors Quincy Lewis, Dylan Cochran, Jordan Hurd, Sam Ashley, and Roman Mendoza; sophomores CJ Vella, Christian Greenwood, and Christian Sabzook; freshman Isaiah Early. Coaching staff for the Eagles include head coach Billy White Jr., assistant coaches Pat Erskine, Charles Harris, and Tommy Garcia; athletic direct trainer Dalton Jennings and Danielle Reese; athletic coordinator Ben Bitner, athletic director Brenda Marshall; principal Scott Walker, and superintendent Roland, Dr. Roland Hernandez. Now therefore be it resolved by the Commissioners Court of Nuaces County that the court hereby recognizes Veterans Memorial Boys Basketball Program for their athletic accomplishments and achievements.
So moved.
I am.
Motion in a second. Coach White, we welcome you.
Thank you.
Nice to have you here. Tell us about this team.
Thanks for having us. This is an exceptional group of young men. They came in every day, worked extremely hard for us each and every day. And they're as good of basketball players that they are, they're even better young men. They're going to go off and do great things in their lives and be great productive citizens of our society. And I'm extremely proud of the accomplishments that they had this year. As Mr. Chesney said earlier, I did leave and then came back this year, and it was a situation where a lot of these kids were either sophomore or underclassmen at the time when I was here before. And now that they're upperclassmen and back with me, we were able to come together and do a lot of great things and a lot of special things. So it was, I also want to thank you guys for allowing us to be together one more time. Getting, being able to load up on the bus with this group of young men was very special and very dear to my heart because this is a great group of young men. And the regional tournament, meeting the regional tournament is one accomplishment that we had that I'm really proud of, but it's only one step to it. So we do, we do expect to be back each and every year, just like the girls. So that is something, we do have a lot of underclassmen on this group as well that'll be returning, and we're excited about what the future holds for us. So that's something that we're definitely excited about. And also with our seniors that are leaving this year, they played a huge part in our success this year, and they're going to go off and do great things at the next level. I'm going to ask those seniors to come up and say a few words at this time. They might, they don't really want to speak, but I'm going to make them speak. It's all right.
Well, just introduce yourselves if you don't feel like speaking. We just want to get to know you.
Go ahead Nate.
Hi, my name is Nate Reeves, and I've just been playing with these guys for a while now, since I was young. It was great to have one last good season with them, so just thankful for that.
I'm Roger Garcia. Yeah, I really enjoyed playing with all them. It was a good experience and going this far with them.
Good.
I'm Xavier Pettis. I played basketball my sophomore and my senior year. I played with some of these guys growing up, so it was good to be back on the court with them. And I think that there's a culture of winning here, and it's like my baseball coach says, winners win. And that's what Coach White, Coach Erskine, and Coach De La Peña do, so thank you.
Hi, my name's Cameron De La Peña, and I grew up playing with a lot of these guys, and it was a fun run. I just want to thank all of them.
My name's Aiden Guerra, and it was a good experience this year, and we just all play for each other. And I think that's how we do, how we did this year.
I like that. That's a great sentiment. Commissioners, I know we've kind of talked a lot about the girls, but how about a few nice words for these gentlemen?
You know, and I will, Judge, and Commissioner Modas, it was not a slight, it was more of a challenge. Because the winning tradition has been established now on the boy's side. And I'm a huge fan of Coach White. I've watched several of these games because I've watched a lot of these, especially the seniors, play for a long time. And watching Coach White with these young men was pretty impressive. Just didn't hear anything but good things about how he coached and how he interacted and how he cared for the kids, and that's a real tribute, I think. He's brought a stability to veterans that's going to hopefully be there a long time. I think he, I hope he likes being here in Corpus Christi. And he had to go away to kind of realize how great it was, right Coach? We're hoping you'll stay a lot, a lot longer. But it's been fun. You guys, I saw several of your games this year. Lot of fun to watch. You guys are an exciting team. And, you know, I don't know how everybody picked everybody, but I don't know that everybody expected y'all go the fourth round. And that's not a slight either. That just means you you overachieved. You did things as a team that maybe a lot of people didn't think you could. And that's kind of one of those lessons in life that if you work together as a team and you really bust your tails, and you did, and y'all beat some teams that, you know, maybe you shouldn't have beat, but on paper. But because you played so well as a team, because you came together and you had great senior leadership and great coaching, you just, you really did well. And again, not to be repetitive, but the parents play a big role in this. And knowing those sacrifices that everybody made is really important. I hope that all of y'all will leave today and go hug your parents or your grandparents, your aunts and uncles, whoever helped raise you, and make sure you tell them thanks, because none of you would be here without these strong coaches and the strong adults in your lives. But this is all about y'all today. Y'all have achieved. You've earned it. We don't really, we don't bring folks down here until they get to that regional tournament because we could, you know, we'd end up bringing way, not way too many, there's never too many. That sounds wrong, but we don't, we want to make it kind of special. So we don't bring people until they get to that regional tournament. So we want to bring you guys again. We want to keep bringing you down here. We want to keep making sure that you come down here because Commissioner Gonzalez and I now, I've had veterans all these years, but now I'm sharing and I'm happy to share with Commissioner Gonzalez. I think we just did a health fair out at Veterans that we both did, or it's coming up. I can't remember, sorry, because we really, we know what a great quality institution you have. So congratulations on great success. I know Aiden's going to be playing a little next year at A and M Kingsville, so happy for you too. That's pretty cool. So we've already talked about, my son's going to be at St. Ed's, and we'll look forward to some good battles there between St. Ed's and A and M Kingsville, and keep that going. So we've watched you guys play a long time. Of course Xavier, you know, blame blame me for that one because he grew up a lot in my house. So it's always good to have him in the room and Nate. And so, you know, and of course Cameron, you know, I watched the day. Not trying to not mention all of you, but really proud of you. You had a great season. Congratulations.
Well, the good thing of me coming on and joining Commissioner Chesney and veterans, I can promise you one thing, I won't talk as much as Commissioner Chesney.
Fair.
I let him talk for both of us. But I just want to say, Coach, thank you very much for all you do. It starts with you, you know, you're the one that molded them and worked with them. You know, so guys, you know, it's what you learn, what you take with you, and then what you do on the court and at home that makes you an individual. So I just want to say again to the parents, thank you for your support. God bless you.
Commissioners?
I already said, and just to be, you know, technical, you know, looking at the map, I do also represent part of veterans, even though I don't have.
Everybody wants to represent veterans now. Come on.
I already did when I was on school board, so it's just continuation here. But no, once again, we're really proud of you all. Thank you all for your work and being such great leaders and demonstrating that, just being a class act, sportsmen, sportswomen on the court, you know, never saw any real issues. We know basketball is a very physical sport, but just the way that you carry yourselves and represent the community means a lot, so thank you.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes ma'am. Thank you again for both teams, boys and girls, for acting the way y'all do out in the, with the citizens. But it starts at home, like Commissioner Gonzalez and Commissioner Chesney. You need to have good mentors, and you've got very good mentors. We need your coaches, and you have great mentors at home. So that's where it all starts. Thank you again. Congratulations. Thank you.
So we'll see you, as they say. We'll see you next year for you underclassmen, and we can't wait to have you back. Remember what the great MJ said. Y'all know what his most famous line ever was? He never ran out of, he never lost a game. What did he run out of? Time. You guys haven't lost any games. You just run out of a little bit of time. We'll see you guys back. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let's do this. Let's have the girls first.
Right.
Okay, then guys, let's see if we can fill in. And but we'd love to have those individual shots as well. But let's have the girls first. Girls, if you can, you can do both. You can come, some of you back here and then up here. Let's see what it looks like. You're actually not as big a team as the, as the boys looks like.
So.
Okay, here we go guys. Okay, ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. Oh, you dare smile. One, two, three. One more.
Hi, on that Michael consent agenda item? Can you ask Tony on the consent agenda item?
Were you asking me to stick it in consent? I can? I can? Okay. I'm just saying, just let her know. And if not, I can take it out. Well, that certainly was nice. And for all of you that are waiting on your items, if you have kids, you'll appreciate it. If you don't, when you have it, you will appreciate it. There's just so little time. Life goes by so fast. And all of a sudden, you wake up and they're seniors and you crave every moment, every photo, every, it's just amazing. So I'm glad that we do that. I know it takes a lot of time, but so did their efforts. So it seems like it's appropriate on the balancing act. But we will move on because we do have two important recognitions. The month of May turns out to be an important one for not only mental health, as many of you know, mental health is the month of May, but one that's near and dear to our hearts. And that's Foster Care Awareness Month. And we have many representatives here today to create that awareness. But first, we'll turn our attention to Belinda.
Thank you Judge. Whereas, whereas we have a responsibility as individuals, neighbors, community members, and citizens of Noises County to recognize that children and youth need unconditional love, support, security, and a place to call home. And whereas foster parents provide the love, safety, and stability that children and youth need in order to overcome past traumatic experiences so that they can reach their full potential. And whereas we must come together as a community to recognize the important role foster parents play in caring for children and youth who have experienced abuse and neglect, supporting family reunification and building strong communities. And whereas the stability and permanency for children and foster children is of the utmost importance. And whereas through partnerships with families, child welfare staff, and public and private agency, there is a collaborative effort to ensure that children and youth in Noises County are supported and successful. And whereas Noises County is in need of dedicated care providers who will strive in partnership with local nonprofits and agencies to identify and connect children and youth in foster care to permanent lifelong relationships. Whereas during National Foster Care Month, we celebrate all those who have invited children and youth in need into their hearts and into their homes and express our profound appreciation for all who help make foster care possible. And now therefore, be it resolved by the Commissioners Court of Noises County does hereby proclaim the month of May 2022 as Foster Care Awareness Month and urges all citizens to recognize the valuable service of foster families in our community. Furthermore, we do hereby commend Agape Ranch and those organizations in our community, working to raise awareness for foster children and aged out youth in the Coastal Bend and for supporting our community's foster families.
Thank you, Belinda. I'd like to make the motion first and ask for a second to approve this resolution for Foster Care Awareness Month. I've got a second. I made the motion. I'll take that as a second. And we do recognize that we have members of, I'm imagining board members of, and maybe some volunteers of Agape Ranch. And we'd love for you to introduce yourself, your team, and for those of you that, for me, that the word Agape is so beautiful. Such a, it's a different kind of love. It's an unconditional love. And I cannot think of a better organization to represent foster care awareness than the work that the Agape Ranch Board does. Welcome.
Thank you so much. I'm Shannon Murphy. I'm Community Relations Coordinator for Agape Ranch. Thank you so much Judge Gonzalez and Commissioners, just for allowing us the opportunity to have a proclamation to recognize May as Foster Care Awareness Month. It's a month and an opportunity to educate and bring awareness to the needs of foster children and youth in the Coastal Bend. And I was just thinking, I was listening to everything that you were saying to our basketball players this morning, how timely it is that we're following them. Because a few of you mentioned the importance of family and good role models and mentors and how it starts at home. And if we think about our foster children and youth, they don't always have that. So it takes many people in our community to raise a successful child, to become a productive adult, correct? So it's the time to recognize, this month is the time to recognize the foster parents, family members, volunteers, mentors, policymakers, child welfare professionals. We have representatives from the, from the Noises Child Welfare County Board and Texas Department of Family Protective Services. We have a couple of our Agape Ranch Board members here. We have representatives from our team at Agape Ranch and Agape Harbor. We're all working together to help children and youth in foster care find permanent homes and connections. So I just wanted to mention that there's an opportunity for anyone in our community to support. You don't always have to be a foster parent. That is the highest calling. But you may not be ready for that. We always need volunteers and respite care providers. We need donations. We're currently having a match this month. Every donation will be doubled to $47,000. So it takes time, it takes love, it takes money to continue the programs that we provide. But it's so important here in Noises County. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Did anybody else want to speak? Would anybody else like to offer? If you would just introduce yourself.
Good morning. I'm Cornelia Garza. I am the Faith Base Program Specialist for Region 11 for CPS and work very closely with the Agape Ranch and very thankful to them for the work they do within the community. Without them, we, you know, without them, and also all the other child placing agencies that are contracted by the department, we would definitely have a bigger gap in the number of foster families that we have in our community. So I pray that they continue to raise the, raise the awareness, raise the alarm. And as Ms. Shannon mentioned, right, anyone can come and walk alongside the children under the CPS umbrella.
Thank you. Beautiful words. Commissioners, any further comments? Commissioner Modas? I know this is an important month for you.
Absolutely for me and I know for former Judge Chesney when he was there at Court Five, you know, anything that deals with CPS, Child Abuse Awareness Month in April, and of course recognizing foster families and all the agencies and efforts that take place, you know, reminds me of the work I did, the work we did. I still call myself and consider myself part of CPS. Once you've spent even one day there, you're part of that family for life and the work that we do. And it's not a perfect agency, but we try to get perfect results for these children and families that deserve it. And so I thank you for bringing advocacy, a reminder to us as this court, when we were looking at agencies to help support with our, through our budget efforts and also just as a community as a whole. So I'm glad you're here today to, for allowing us to recognize this and to celebrate these, these special services and really a part out of y'all's hearts. Everyone has a story and a reason. Some, it may just be a job, but it slowly, I'm sure, develops into more than that. And so I thank you all for your work that you do and count, count on, on me as an advocate and a supporter for, for you and all the work Agape Ranch does and all of our foster agencies and foster families and respite care providers. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post them sign. And to learn more, you can go on agape ranch.org if you've never heard of Agape Ranch. I loved what you said about, you know, the word fostering. It's amazing, but CPS and Agape Ranch really are fostering this connection. And we need both, both agencies, both services really work in tandem. We're grateful that you were here today. We have a resolution that we'd like to present if both of you would come up or all of you would like to come up.
I just want to say one thing.
We can take a photo.
I just want to say one thing to the group. I just want to thank y'all for everything you do every single day, 365 days a year. Because I think it takes a special, a special type of person to be able to work with that population. So I thank you for being angels every day. God bless you.
I also want to chime in a little bit. I also want to thank you all, because it does take a special kind of person to get involved with these youngsters, young kids, and with the families. So for what you all do, thank you all very much. Because not everybody's made to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll come down, invite you all to come up.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you all very much. Congratulations.
Thank you. How you doing? Good to see you. I'm not. Commissioner Hernandez now. But I'll be out there to support.
One of the things we've been talking about is Better Public Messaging Board on Floor One, because all of these great resolutions really should be highlighted in the month so that everybody walks in and knows what month it is and how they can get involved. I think that's something to follow up on. And speaking of good works, we have a recognition of May 19th, which is coming up, as National Stop the Bleed Day. But this is our opportunity to talk about this important effort. Belinda?
Whereas uncontrolled bleeding is a major cause of preventable deaths, approximately 40% of trauma-related deaths worldwide are due to bleeding or its consequences. Establishing hemorrhage is one of the most common causes of preventable death and trauma. Whereas the average time to bleed out is two to five minutes and the average time for first responders to arrive is seven to 10 minutes. Whereas bystanders can fill the gap, anyone can be trained to be ready to save someone's life. Whereas Stop the Bleed Campaign was initiated by a federal internet agency work group convened by the National Security Council staff and the White House. The purpose of the campaign is to build national resilience to better preparing the public to save lives by raising awareness of our basic actions to stop life-threatening bleeding following everyday emergencies and man-made and natural disasters. Advances made by military medicine and research in hemorrhage control during the wars in Afghanistan and Iraq have informed the work to this initiative which exemplifies translation of knowledge back to the homeland into the benefit of the general public. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Commissioners Court of Noises County, that the 19th day of May 2022 is National Stop the Bleed Day and encourages all citizens to get trained, be ready, and be empowered to stop the bleed.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on Stop the Bleed? Yes, thank you.
Thank you Judge. I'm Karen Beard. I'm on the board with the Coastal Bend Regional Advisory Council, which you're very familiar with. And if you recall, around 2019 or 18, we taught a bunch of your staff, which we're happy to come back and do again, Stop the Bleed. It's important to know, especially in Texas, it's not just the active shooter situation. We have hunters, we have fishermen, all kinds of stuff that can have a penetrating wound that can cost someone their life. So we're happy to bring this course to this region. I'll also let Jennifer from Spahn Talk, and she'll share some more information.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Carr. I'm the Vice President of Trauma Services for the Krista Spahn Health System. Have with me Dr. Odansky, our Trauma Medical Director and Trauma Surgeon, and then one of our Trauma Coordinators, both with Shoreline's Trauma Program. Karen, echo everything Karen said about Stop the Bleed. Some of the things that we are doing, I'm involved in a coalition at the state level on planning Stop the Bleed training. May 19th, obviously, is the day that we are doing multiple classes throughout the system, throughout the community. As far as Spahn, Alice Bevel, Clayberg, South Shoreline, all of our hospitals are teaching Stop the Bleed classes multiple times throughout the day. Coastal Bend Regional Advisory Council, I am the Chair for the Trauma Committee for that. And we are also, have lots of classes going on throughout the community. We're trying as a state to have as many people trained on Stop the Bleed in the month of May. And so really trying to see how big we can get our numbers and so we can set our goal even higher for next year. Try and encourage everybody to get out there and get trained. I'm working with local churches, organizations to teach training. This is something can be taught to everybody. We're, you know, working with Veterans High School. And my son will be a freshman at Veterans High School next year and High School next year and, you know, I've trained myself, I mean my son. So definitely we hope to hear from everybody that wants to be trained. We can come to you and train, you can come to us. Really excited to be able to promote this life-saving technique.
Thank you, thank you. I hope you're proud of us too. We have on all our floors Stop the Bleed kits and our risk manager helped us obtain those, properly place them, make sure we have folks on every floor that know how to utilize them. But I want you to know that all came because of CBRAC and Christus and really just understanding that that was something that it wasn't very hard to obtain. It's something that could have huge impact in saving lives. As you said, it doesn't have to be some act of terror. It can be an act of, you know, everyday occurrence, that, a piece of glass that unfortunately, you know, might cause a serious penetrating wound. So you, you really opened my eyes and I think the court's eyes on, on this important lifesaver, just like CPR, right? We just, we now have muscle memory how important Stop the Bleed is. So we thank you for that and thank you for the continued awareness. Is there a motion to approve such?
Second.
I've got a motion in a second and I do have the resolution here. Are there any other comments here? Anyone in our courtroom trained for Stop the Bleed? Okay, that's unusual. Usually we, usually we do, Chase was gonna, voluntary, yes. Okay, so there are always typically in every room, there's somebody. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Would you honor us? I have the copy of this beautiful Commissioners Court Resolution and we'd love to get a picture because I think it's something that you should promote on, on your websites at CBRAC, Facebook, at Christus. Okay, I'll come on down.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Been up here.
Our ambassador just went to, that we helped get, that you helped get.
We'll jump back.
All of your efforts.
Come back this way.
Okay, we'll move back just a little bit further.
Thank you very much, thank you very much.
If I can see this on either one of your ears.
One, two, three.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner. I'm sorry, Commissioner.
One, two, three.
Calling fast, fast three with the four.
Thank you, ladies. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Appreciate what you do.
Thank you all, whatever you do. I can't send it in there yet.
So the last one under this section G, I believe there's a copy, I don't know, I thought I saw it here in front of us, but there is a copy of it in your packet. It's in support of the Public Health interim charge related to the study of fentanyl-related overdoses in Texas and Be Well Texas, UT Health San Antonio's work related to this charge. And Belinda has more information.
Yes, and I'll go ahead and just read the resolution. I'm not sure if Be Well Texas is online. They said they were going to be joining by Zoom. John, if he's online, if he can, go ahead and raise his hand. Whereas the Center of Disease Control and Prevention states that drug overdose deaths and opioid-involved deaths continue to increase in the United States and that 91 Americans die every day from an opioid overdose. Whereas on October 26, 2017, President Trump officially declared the opioid crisis a public health emergency. Whereas as the Texas House of Representatives Public Health interim charge provides for the study of the impact of fentanyl-related overdoses and deaths in Texas, the evaluation of existing data collection, dissemination and mitigation strategies regarding opioid use in Texas and making recommendations to improve coordinated prevention, education, treatment and data sharing. Whereas Be Well Texas at UT Health San Antonio funded by the Texas Health and Human Services is a statewide collaborative effort to reduce the burden of substance use in Texas and improve the quality of life for people adversely impacted by substance use disorders by expanding access to critical care. Whereas Be Well Texas is actively working to provide support for this public health charge related to fentanyl-related overdoses. Now therefore be it resolved by the Commissioners Court of Noises County that it does hereby express its support of the Texas House of Representatives Public Health interim charge providing for the study of the impact of fentanyl-related overdoses and deaths in Texas and the work of Be Well Texas in collaboration with like-minded organizations to support this interim charge.
Thank you, I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
I don't see him on, so I'll just pass, but I know that he was on just to thank us for the opportunity to have this resolution be included with many, many other counties. Thank you, Belinda. I don't see Louis, he was here earlier. I can skip H1 till you guys maybe let him know that we're up. I'd like to move to the minutes at this time, April 27th, 2022 and May 5th, 2022, minutes I, one.
I don't, I don't, I can't find those. Can someone provide me a copy? I don't know why they're not in my book. Could, could we just wait on those for, and let me get someone to bring me those, Judge? I just wanted to.
Of course.
I apologize.
I can also give you a copy.
I tried to find them and I forgot to ask for them.
But I think we'll just, anyone else have an extra copy? We'll, we'll pass on it for just?
I don't know that we got them this time. I don't know that we get either. You don't have them either?
But I think you can get them online. Can you email them real quick, like on that click to view? Just to make sure that they're there so that you could?
I wonder if they're in the packet. I just didn't know if I didn't have it in my packet or? You didn't either? Okay.
Okay, well, while Connie's looking there, we'll move forward and go to Board Appointments. There's one for the Noises County Beach Management Advisory Committee. It's from somebody, it's a, it's a vacancy due to somebody moving on. And so I would ask Belinda to make announce, or whoever wants to make the announcement of the applicants. Go ahead. This is J1 for the clerk.
Could this be the one they're recommending or what?
Well?
These are one coastal parks.
Well, well, we, I don't know if they're actually recommending, but it's a?
Judge, the one?
We have, we have several applicants.
Right.
Just give us a second.
Just to, to remind the court, because there's really good applicants, is this first one, and again, there's other good ones too. This first one was the one that John had wanted to come back to before when we didn't, we didn't have enough slots. So I'm not saying that's who we should or shouldn't pick, I'm just reminding the court of that.
Right, well, but let me announce, we have three applicants. We have Merida, May, Mendoza, Nardone, May Nardone. We also have Mr. Rudy Cortez applicant and we also have Florence Tissot. And so we have three applicants, but only to fill one space.
We have four.
And all I really want to know, make sure is all the applications are in good order and we can consider all three of them. Is that accurate?
I think we have four.
We have Pittman also.
Oh, Pittman.
Yes, Michael Pittman. We also have Michael Pittman.
I see this one here too. Yes.
You got four vacancies?
Let me add that one, Michael Pittman.
You got four vacancies?
One vacancy.
Only one vacancy. Okay. Yes, Mr. Michael Pittman.
I mean?
Okay, so we have four, four particular applicants and are any of them here with us today?
I believe Ms. Nardone is online.
Okay, okay. And?
Judge?
All right, so?
This is another tough spot because they're all super good applicants.
They are, they're all great applicants. I'll just?
We passed on this, the one that y'all talked about before because of her?
These are all, they're all very good applicants and I'll just make the motion and let's see how it goes, but to appoint May Mendoza Nardone to this Beach Management Advisory Committee. Actually, it's called Noises County Beach Management Advisory Committee and would ask for a second. Okay, there's a, there's a second.
Well, and, and the Coastal Parks Board had, or Scott had reached out to mention that Ms. Tissot had been coming to all the meetings anyway. This was the one we passed on. I love Ms. Nardone. I, I?
Well, we'll just, we'll vote and then we can, we can have a further nomination. We just, we have to do it in the, in the process. They're all great.
Yeah.
They're all excellent. And there might be an upcoming vacancy as well. But again, the way we do it is it's, it's a new application, it's a new time period and unfortunately we have to take the process as we see it, so.
And, and I guess since we were kind of maybe in discussion since there was a second, I, I wanted to ask because such, you know, this is one of those positions where we always have a wealth of applicants and I hate to see, you know, some of the names that, that are really interested in serving not have the opportunity maybe, but you know, if they're somewhere else, some sort of additional advisory that's related to the work that's done, that we could utilize them for now and kind of have as a, I want to say a holding
Alternate, maybe?
But just as a, a position where they could be utilized until maybe, you know, something else opens up or we, you know, re-up again on everybody on their terms. But, but I agree. Ms. Tissot is an excellent candidate. I think that she would be an excellent fit as well. Ms. Nardone is, she is very active and I know most of these names and, and know that they are all active on everything beach management and island related. So I don't think we'd be hurting no matter who we selected. But that would be my question, I guess, do we know Iday or, I know it kind of comes out of your office, do we have any other committee appointments that could be related to this position or is this pretty much the only committee that is beach management related? Do you know?
As far as I know, this is the one that is, yes, related.
And, and I, and again, I'm just, I'm, this is a struggle for me because the court said the next time we had one, we would put Ms. Tissot on. That was what the court said. That was kind of the same vein we talked about before. So I, I mean, that is, that's, you know, and this person lives in your precinct, you made that request, you're the one who said, hey, I'd really like to put her on there. So I'm, I'm?
Well, let's, let me do the vote and then we can redo it if, if it doesn't fail. But I, we have a motion in a second and as you guys know, we need to move through that process. So all those in favor of May Nardone signify by saying aye. Aye? And then opposed, same sign?
No, no.
I'm going to abstain on that just because?
Okay, I've got one abstention and, and, and a push, so it doesn't work. So I'll move to another nomination.
Florence Tissot.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Then Judge, I'd like to follow up on what John said and, and I don't, I don't think it's out of the realm of doing something and making a motion to put Ms. Nardone on as an ex officio, like you were talking about, member, because I think she brings great value, but I just think this court made a commitment to the Tissot application, not a hard commitment, but a kind of a verbal commitment. And so I'd like to make a motion to put her on as an ex officio member and then, or an alternate, however we want to call it, to where we're always having quorum prob, we've had quorum problems in the past.
We have, a lot of quorum problems.
So maybe we could put it on as an alternate or an ex officio. I, I don't think that's out of the realm of the scope of what we could do.
I don't have the committee description, Jenny, handy, but if that's available to us, we'd have to probably bring it back, but?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, could we bring this back and if, if statutorily we're allowed to add or increase?
Can I just do it as subject to?
We're changing the rules right now if it's not in there.
I'm saying, could I do it as a subject to like we do? Make a motion as an alternate or an ex officio member for May Nardone, subject to them checking that out legally to make sure that that's acceptable? Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's, that's fine. It can be subject to. That's a different motion, Kara.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we did vote on it.
I'm amending my motion. I made the motion, so I'm amending it to say subject, I'm just adding the subject to language to it.
That's fine.
What we always do.
So it may not, and just to make sure that Ms. Nardone understands, it may not work, we will, the way it works, court administration will contact you and let you know, but give us a chance to, to make that inquiry with the, with the county attorney after reviewing the committee formation. When we form these committees, there's usually bylaws and so we'll go back to the bylaws and see and then it may take an amendment of the bylaws to come back. Kara, does that help you?
It does, but I just, to clarify, so?
Go ahead. If you don't mind.
Do you want to point?
I can't hear you.
To so?
That's already been done.
No, that was your first motion and then you amended that.
No, no, we voted on that one.
No, you?
Which one?
Well, it's okay if?
That already is a motion on the floor.
I can?
The one didn't pass and one passed.
Right, we already voted on that one.
Okay, so I think she's asking?
The one, the person was two, two with an abstention and then we voted on Ms. Tissot and then I'm coming back with a second motion.
That was the motion?
For Ms. Tissot.
Was for her and then you made?
Second.
The second.
And then we?
And I didn't catch that, I mean?
Sorry. Okay, so we did vote?
Voted again.
Let us call, call it again. All those in favor of Ms. Tissot signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
I think it was all five of us said ayes. And then he has this separate?
Separate motion, subject to?
Separate motion that's subject to, would be the appointment of May Nardone, subject to the ability to do so as an alternate.
Or ex officio, whichever works.
And I didn't see this, but I have a, a hand up. Connie? Go ahead. You're unmuted.
I just, I was just wanting clarification and I'm okay with whatever the court decides. You just let me know. You kind of answered it as you continued on.
Yes, thank you.
I'm okay, I'm okay as an alternate or if an opening opens up again. I just knew there had been an opening and was asked by one of the members on that committee and I'll be happy to serve and help wherever I can, so that's fine.
Thank you, thank you. And, and I don't want to leave out any of the, of the gentlemen also that applied, they're all great. I happen to know Mr. Pittman's, he's a very active island rep, so I'm glad this is the one area that we're starting to get more activity, so. I, Kara, I hope that that helps. Okay. And did you record our, our vote on that second one too? It was all ayes. Okay. All right, so we're going to go back to the minutes. Did we get the minutes? Commissioner Chesney, Kara was looking for the minutes of the 27th and the 5th.
And I emailed them, I just?
They're in the email. Okay, I'll skip it for now. I'm just letting it, wanting to make sure that he has them.
I do now, I'm just looking.
Okay, so we'll move on for this moment and ask Louis to come up. It's General Information Reports, H1. And with having, just had hurricane conference, there's a few things to catch up on and then we'll move to the consent agenda and that might give us time to get those minutes in order. Go ahead, Emergency Management Coordinator Ray.
Good morning, Court, how you doing?
Good morning.
All right, so a quick, a quick update of the conditions. All right, so the highs for this week is averaging about 95 degrees. Heat index would be about 97 degrees for this week. Humidity is near 32%. And we're going to have peak wind gusts this week at about 25 miles per hour. For today and tomorrow, there is a high recurrent risk and it takes the A&amp;M Weather Service 30-day rainfall deficit trending at about 25% below normal. And for this week, we have hunters out there, so one of the things we want to bring up is for our people who are indulging in outdoor activities to be extremely mindful of the conditions and the high fire, the high risk for wildfires. The KBDI averaged for this week is 648. The EOC long-range calendar, so we had the, we were going to have the Corpus Christi's Office of Emergency Management will have an annual exercise for evacuation. That's going to happen on June 16th. We will be a part of that. The County EM, we're planning to have a, a emergency operation plan workshop with the other EMs throughout Noises County to discuss how to update your emergency action plans and the emergency management plans. And on June 21st, we're going to have a meeting with the US Army North about the state civil service teams. So the civil service team is a organization that is assigned to the states. There's about 46 of them, I believe, in the United States that are activated when there's activated when there's a risk of high terrorism or an emergency that involves a terrorist there, threat. They're looking to do some training in Nuasis County in August. So, we're going to have our first planning meeting, June 21st. Short range. Uh, so we're going to have a, uh, participate in a town hall tomorrow with Victoria's, uh, Emergency Management Team. And the TMAC, uh, the Texas Emergency Management Conference is happening on 31st through 3 June. The County, uh, EM also, uh, participated with the City of Corpus Christi and the National Weather Service yesterday as a part of a town hall meeting for hurricane preparedness. And the Port of Corpus Christi will have a town hall that we'll, that we will participate in on May 19th at 10:00. All right, so as the judge mentioned earlier, uh, last week, we had a terrific, uh, turnout for the hurricane conference. We had about 841 people who registered for the conference and 314 that participated in the, um, hurricane exercise that happened after the conference. And that's all I have today.
Thank you. And just a special thank you to Chief Nim Kidd, Texas Division of Emergency Management, who gave the large keynote on the first day. And his message was, uh, really very, very exciting for Texas. They are going to really almost quadruple their efforts statewide with Tiedem representatives. So, we'll have to, Louis, bring them, see if we can get that map for next time, that what we look like today and what we're going to look like in the future. And also the training, uh, that will go into, to the Tiedem District Rep. So, right now, we have one rep for about 11 counties. We're about to get seven. That gives you a feel for how important it is. And he said efficiency is killing preparedness. And so, this is the time to invest in emergency management. And I really, uh, thought that his words were very timely, given all of the calamities that we've gone through. So, thank you for helping put that on. And, um, and it was a good, it was an excellent conference. Um, thanks to all the commissioners that participated and their assistants. Are there any questions for Louis? Or shall we move on? Okay. Thank you, Louis. We'll move on. Let's, I'm still going to give you a little more time for those minutes. I'm going to go on to the consent and then you let me know, please. Um, the consent is listed as items A through M. And then I was going to also, uh, direct your attention to one that is, uh, D1 under purchasing. And it should have been included in consent. And I've been given the go-ahead to, um, to include it as well. And so, again, it's items A through M. A through M. Okay, I'll make the motion to.
O, H.
Okay, tell me again. O?
H and M.
Okay, H and M. H, H is in hat?
And M.
H is in hairy and M is in merry.
M and M, H and M.
H and M. Okay, fine. And, um, that leaves us with A, uh, through, well, A through G and then I through L, plus the item, again, it's 3D1. Is there a, I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you. All those in favors signify by saying aye. Aye? Okay, so let's take H first. This is, um, uh, I think Ida could probably clear this one up. This is a ministerial. It's an amendment to the sublease agreement that occurred a while back.
So, are we at the end of the lease? Or what, what, what is it? Is it extension to February 28th, lease rate reduction?
That's correct. So, when we approved that, when the court approved this, the lease back in probably January, it was through June. Now, we're adjusting because we have the, the agreement with the city. So, we're just moving, uh, with, with, to approve it through the, uh, the 28th.
Earlier.
This is just a cleanup.
Correct.
So, then we're not, we're done with this?
We're not extending it. End this on the 28th. We're not paying anything else because we already, that's what, we're adjusting the payment as well.
It's just January through February.
This is the, so we're not doing this lease anymore?
That's correct. We already approved it. Now, you're, we're backing off on the date. So, it's helpful to the county. This is a ministerial.
That's what threw me over, the extensions.
Right, so there's no, we had proved it through June. We're now like.
But now we're just making it like, like cleaning it up. Yeah.
And then we're done with that.
That's correct. Right, this is, okay. All right, motion and a second. Uh, I'll, I'll be the second, Kara, sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay. And then how about, um, M is in merry. That's the.
You're going to put M there because I just want to clarify. I know there's another thing here for the medical examiner. Uh, and I just want to make sure that the, uh, the 315,000, uh, 3,500 per day, 90 days is coming through the general fund?
When the court approved the, the, the adjustments in the last court, um, we saw there is going to be some savings, for salary savings. And then it has to come, everything from the general fund, whatever we're going to.
And, and I think maybe we could amend this by saying July 18th or whatever's earlier.
Oh, that's correct.
Okay, so I think that's important.
Yeah.
So, it's 90 days or July 18th, whichever is.
Yeah, we put it as a July 18th, which is the date.
Right.
But I do, um, to the whole amount that we're talking about here, is it coming from the general fund? Or is it funds when they're being saved from the?
It's going to be both. Yeah, it's coming from the savings that we have in department and for the medical examiner department. And, um, and it probably is going to be the general fund as well, just to cover everything.
Do we know how much is from what and what much is from, do we know how much is from the general fund? How much is from the, from the savings? Do we know that?
I can work on the numbers, Commissioner, when I get you that.
Again, it depends how many days.
I'm ready to approve already.
Yeah, I do need to know what, I do want to know what was.
Okay, so will you make a motion then to approve?
Yeah, from it, I'll turn it over.
All right, I've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. And all those in favors signify by saying aye. Aye? Okay. Um, we are now at, you'll recall that we tabled item 3A1. So, if you're following along with us, we've already done 3A1, tabled that one to, uh, the next court, which I believe is the 25th, 25th. And again, I would just ask that everybody please review, um, that which was given to you yesterday. Next, we have received the update regarding the American World War II Heritage City Regional Application Submission with the National Park Service. We have an all-star cast here, uh, to talk about this. Um, from the City of Corpus Christi, Nina Nixon Mendez, so happy to have you. Thank you for patiently waiting. Um, and then we also have Jenny Cross in the United Corpus Christi Chamber of Commerce, JJ de la Cerdah, of course, our Veterans Service Officer and Coastal Parks Director, Scott Cross. Talk us through this. And then, um, we gotta be able to hopefully get everybody a, a copy. Has that?
Yeah, this should have been attached to your agenda. And, okay.
Yes.
Um, I really, really, really want to draw your attention to this. I really hope you take time to read through this. It's very interesting. A lot of history here. Nina worked her tail end off helping us put all this together. And it's, this in and of itself could be its own curated display at a museum somewhere. It could, it could be its own little mini-book. But anyhow, this is what we submitted. Um, uh, we got word back that we should know in about 90 days. And it's what, from what we understand, we're the only one in Texas that submitted. So, this could be a huge deal if we get this thing. So, we're all proud of it. And, um, you've already introduced everybody back here that, that helped us work on this. And so, um, we're, we're really, really happy.
So, I just want to highlight here that this is a regional submission. So, it includes the City of Port Aransas, the City of Kingsville. Uh, it's two counties, Nuasis County, excuse me, and Clayburg County. We want to thank our friends in Clayburg. Their rich history lent quite a bit to the story. Uh, of course, you've already, uh, paid a lot of kudos to Nina, um, and her, the, the whole town hall that JJ and the Veterans Roundtable.
Really successful.
Really successful. And also to Cecilia Venable, the Texas Historical Commission, and so many others, um, that contributed and.
Our letters of support. I think we've got one. Jenny wrangled all the letters of support. I don't know.
Up and down the coast.
Yeah, I don't know of an elected official, whether it be federal or state, that we did not get a letter of support from. I mean, it was phenomenal.
I agree. This also comes out of a congressional act. So, while other, um, you know, well, we might be the only one. That would be wonderful because that would mean that we would be declared. One community in each state will receive this designation. And, uh, while we'll anxiously wait, uh, the truth is, is that we see tremendous upward potential for economic development, tourism, potential military trail. This is just enormous. Please take a look at this. It can also be given to you digitally. And the photographs, the memorabilia from people around our community. We want to thank you at this time. And, um, I just want to see if Nina wants to say anything. I, we needed a curator. So, basically, we had 10 different authors and, but you had to have somebody who understood the style of how we wanted to make this presentation and the history. She is in charge of our historic preservation, uh, plan for the City of Corpus Christi and that update, upcoming update. And I hope that this helps, uh, tell our story. Nina?
Thank you. Uh, good morning. It's a pleasure to be here. Uh, this was a tremendous project to be involved in. And I do thank, uh, both Nuasis and Clayburg Counties for, um, engineering this, uh, nomination, uh, for our Texas Coastal Bend Cities. Uh, the criteria for the submission was to describe our city's home front contributions to World War II efforts. And then secondly, how we preserve our World War II legacy. And, uh, we had a tremendous amount of, uh, contributors to the project, as the judge has said. Uh, we started off with about a 20-page document. And after the World War II Town Hall and, uh, an outpouring of information from, uh, many, many, uh, groups and organizations, uh, it became a 38-page document. And, uh, so, uh, again, I thank you for the opportunity to, uh, work on the project. Um, as the judge said, this really has some wonderful implications with respect to heritage tourism efforts. And we could use, uh, this, uh, document as a framework for future self-guided tours, exhibits, and, and other ways to communicate how we preserve and honor, um, our World War II heritage.
Thank you.
Judge, you know, recently I had a, a chance to, to visit with the City Manager of Kingsville, Mark McLaughlin. A lot of you know, he's a former commander at NAS Kingsville, now City Manager there. And, and he's an aviator, of course. And so, I was, we were just talking about different things in the area. He mentioned as, as an aviator flying up and down the coast, that you will see many former airstrips from World War II are still have that pattern of the airstrips along, up and down the Gulf Coast here in Texas. So, I thought that was pretty neat. And so, I don't know if that's part of this or if that can be included somehow. And so, I know he's a, a great source of information. But like you said, it's regional. It's, it's all of us in it together. And so, hopefully, that tidbit along with all the other pluses that we have in our, you know, being a military town and community also goes and, and helps us get this designation. But, uh, thank y'all for your work.
And while it did take this huge village, it took one special person to say, wow, look at this, Judge, let's apply. And so, um, kudos to Scott Cross and his friends at US Fish and Wildlife Service. The fact is, you're a friendly guy. And those, those friendships pay huge. With US Fish and Wildlife led them to say, hey, maybe you should consider this. And that really just steamrolled into this incredible project. And I think years from now, we're going to be so proud of, of what we're able to do. JJ came in and, um, again, I know you look at your packets, but take this one home on the weekend. From the USS Lexington, the only naval carrier, um, in the state of Texas, Captain Banta from the Port of Corpus Christi's contributions. You'll be shocked from the war bond effort. Everything you see in here is documented from Corpus Christians. That's what's, well, excuse me, from all of the communities that, that participated. From Port A, Bishop was, had a huge role here as well. Just wonderful. So, um, again, congressional act in 2019. And, um, I think this is really going to be very special. So, let's bring you back when we get that final word. And, uh, appreciate it. Jenny from the chamber.
Thanks, Judge. Um, I just wanted to say what a pleasure it was to work on this project. And, um, so rare that something was so uniting. It was such great enthusiasm for it. So, um, I think it's going to work out for us. I know that, um, Cornyn's office and Cloud's office are in contact with National Park Service about this. So, they're working for us behind the scenes. So.
Awesome. As soon as you know something.
Yes.
And also just.
We'll plan a big event.
And just something small. You know, everybody did such great work here. It would be nice to just do a follow-up for all the communities that did help us. And just let them know what we know right now. Like, for example, I don't know if Port A, if we could get on their schedule. But again, to do the same thing you're doing here in Kingsville and in Port A, especially those jurisdictions, Nina, if you could do anything at the city, just to, I just want to make sure the packets in every elected's hands.
I ran into Judge Madrid at the hurricane conference on Thursday. And I told him I said I needed to come down there and.
Okay, good.
Present to their commissioner's court because they did give us a letter of support. And Commissioner Salinas, which is Commissioner Chesney's counterpart for Precinct Four down there, I updated him as well before we put in the application to make sure they were okay with it. And so, and then I guess it was whoever you had reach out for the letter of support.
Yes.
But yeah, we need to get out there and update them. Um, we should probably get on the city council on Port A, give them an update, which would, you know, bring in Papa and everybody else over there. So.
Agreed.
Me and JJ will schedule getting out on the commissioner's court in Clayburg County.
Wonderful, wonderful collective work. Such a wonderful project. Thank you again. Thanks to all. Um, of course, that was presentation only at this time. Um, how do you feel about the minutes, Commissioner?
I'm good now.
You're good?
Everybody else is.
Okay, that'd be great. If we could get a motion. So, we just don't have to go back, Kara. It's nice to finish it.
To the judge?
Accept the following, yes.
Are you talking about, uh?
I, I won.
I won. I like to table that.
Which one?
You'd like to.
There's just, I just got this today.
Oh.
No, 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 no.
I, I don't think that's.
The minutes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
The minutes. No, the minutes.
I1 is April 27th, 2022, and May 5th, 2022. And these are the accepting of the minutes.
Well, no, he's, he's asking, yeah, you're saying you haven't had a chance to read the minutes.
Yeah.
That we just got.
That's not what he was holding up.
I was holding this up. It's, uh, E1.
Oh, E1, not I1, okay.
Three E1.
This is I1.
Said I1. I mean, I just.
No.
Making sure. Okay, so you're good on I1?
Yeah.
Okay.
And you've got.
So, move to, motion to pass the minutes.
I'll second.
Approve the minutes.
Okay, all those in favor.
Accept the minutes, sorry. I'll get it right.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we've got those minutes for the clerk. So, now we're, again, we're in regular agenda. And, um, we've gone through one and two. We have an important approval of MOU. That's that memorandum of understanding with the Coastal Bend Food Bank for the benefit of Keach Family Library. Either got us this here. It also helps the Bishop Branch Library and the Law Library. It's relating to making the food bank's backpack program available to all our summer library programs. Uh, either welcome. Tell us about this MOU.
I was going to say, good morning, good afternoon.
Yeah, we've hit the afternoon now.
How were you, Judge Commissioners? And we were able to get this memorandum of understanding. And I'd like to say thank you very much to Jenny and her crew over there at the county attorneys. They're always working on our memorandums and any legal matters. And, uh, but it went through. And so, we'd like for y'all's approval to, for us to be able to provide these backpacks through the food bank. And this year, uh, last year, we only had it at the Keach and at the Bishop Branch. And this year, we were able to add it to the, uh, Law Library. So, they will also be helping us distribute these backpacks for any families in need. And all they have to do is contact us as soon as the program begins. And we will start that program in, I guess, sometime in mid-June. And this is for everyone, for the Keach Library, Bishop Branch. So, we are helping everybody in the community with backpacks.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'll make the motion to approve MO, this MOU with the food bank and our libraries. I've got a motion and a second. Are there any questions, discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, any opposed? All right, hearing none. We'll bring Scott Cross back up. And, uh, Scott wins the I've Got Nothing But Great News Award today. Discuss and consider the approval of a grant award from the Texas General Land Office, Project of Special Merit. It's a grant that was relating to the Living Shoreline Project and Public Access at Packery Channel Nature Park. As they say, in case anybody has drifted, this is a time to really focus here. This is an amazing announcement.
So, we, we got 3.3 million 678,000 dollars awarded to us. There's no match in, involved in this. Um, attached is a conceptual drawing that I put on the agenda for y'all to see. This is the, uh, Packery Channel, uh, that runs underneath the bridge out there all, all along the island. It separates basically North Padre Island from Mustang Island. And this is at our Packery Channel Nature Park, which I know some of you. Nature Park, which I know some of you've been out there. I know Commissioner has and Judge, and I think Jag has. Modus, I'm not sure, or Commissioner Modus, I'm not sure if you've been out there. I think you have at Patrick Channel. And Hernandez, you're welcome anytime if you haven't been out there. But this is basically what we're doing is, we've had problems with the shoreline and eroding for quite some time. Years ago, when I looked at doing this, you could not get a core permit except through an individual permit process, which takes a very long time. And then they've made living shorelines nationwide. And under a nationwide permit, the court can say, okay, we can issue your permit with all the agency comments. There is some question still on the permit, though, about the linear feet that we may be just exceeding nationwide linear feet that's allowed. So we're we got a gem. That's a joint evaluation meeting coming up on June the 7th with all the regulatory agencies. By execution of this contract, the court accepting the award and execution this contract, the county attorney's offices have looked at it. Everything looks good to them. And it's pretty much boilerplate stuff we do with the general land office all the time. And so we suspect probably this project, once we get our permit, if we have to get an individual permit, we suspect about two years to complete this project. It's going to be important to note that at some point, this shoreline is heavily, heavily used by fishermen, especially when the black drummer running through the channel there. And so they fish from the banks. And so we came up with this concept where you have the timber pier, so you can still fish without the breakwaters, the rip raft being in your way. And so what we're going to do, we're going to stabilize the bank there. And then we're going to take dredge material behind that. And then we're going to refurbish the wetland area. We're going to gain back the land that we lost from erosion. You'll see a little connection there next to our neighbor there, Brian Gully. One of the things that we may have to do, I may have to leave a little space there. I've got to check with the GLO because they did question that. But anyhow, the erosion that we sustained on this shoreline is just it's been growing year after year. At first, when they opened up the channel, that's when we saw a lot of it. Then it stabilized. But there's a no-wake zone right out there. If you look at your if you look at your drawing, over to the very far left-hand side, you'll see something out there in the water. That's a a no-wake sign. And so what that means is is that these boats are coming off and getting on plane and coming off plane. And so all that wake, you know how a boat, when it slows down or speeds up, pushes it out all that way, it's still causing erosion problems for us and and northeast winds. But this is going to fix all that. The only only thing this is not going to address that we're going to have to address, and I did put it in my budget request, is Packery Channel Nature Park Road. That road is in horrible condition. Anyhow, and so but actually, once we finish this, there's there's a couple of other elements. This is the tier one project as far as the general general land office's resiliency plan. And Judge, you're familiar with that. We've been I've been working on that technical advisory committee for many years. And so this was part of that plan. And so actually, we were estimating 2.3. And we ended up getting, you know, just under $4 million. So and there's no match. This is a good thing. And then there's some other elements back into the park that are still going to be part of the next producing of the updating of the resiliency plan. I've already talked to the GLO about and they're good with. But that's really about it. Coastal parks, you know, actually, it was Megan who did all the heavy lifting on this and helped me write this. Considering she's just been here just a little over a year, we've already got a great return on her investment, that's for sure. And but yeah, we're good to go. We will handle all the grant reporting and everything. So.
That's fantastic. Are there any questions here about the schematic, the work that's going to be done? Obviously, the erosion is so difficult to control, but this is exactly the medicine that we need. I know this is just how many linear feet again, did you say? Five?
No, it's it's more like a little over a thousand.
A thousand? Okay. And so do you see further work here maybe in the future?
Well, you know, there is two landowners to the west of us. And I think one of the pieces of property was up for sale. And years ago, I don't know, Commissioner Gonzalez may remember this, when we had only had 20 acres out there. I don't know if this happened when you were commissioner or not, Commissioner Chesney. We only had 20 acres. And so we got another 18. And it was Charlie Zahn, who was chair of our board, who spearheaded that through whatever they did to get our divided interest undivided. And so we're able to add 18. But those two properties to the west of us understand they have issues with even considering developing these things, because they've got so many tidal flats and wetlands that they'd never be able to afford to mitigate for the impacts. So we are looking at a possible another grant in the future to be able to purchase that and turn it into, you know, more of our Packery Channel Nature Park. And then because I can't I can't get using this money to stabilize their shoreline.
That's right.
Because it's private property.
Got it.
But and, you know, Gully's shoreline and all those other homeowners, it's already hardened. You know, it's there's a sheet pile there. And so.
Right.
They're stable.
Okay, that's great. Very good. Well, I'll I'll make the motion at this time.
But then what time do you put it? Didn't we put a bed out there on those acres that those owners? Didn't we actually put a bed out there trying to get purchase that?
No, you know, Commissioner, we had to do had to get an appraisal of the property, the 18 acres that we got. But somehow, there were two other owners, Francis Gandy and another person that owned were co-owning with us. And so what we did is we just gave we took our 18 acres and separated them out. But then we had to grant them an easement because they can't be landlocked.
He came to court and he came to court.
Yeah, that long time ago. And, you know, I didn't I really wasn't involved in too many of the details. Charlie was really working on all that at the time with I don't I can't remember what commissioner in precinct four at the time. And then and then Judge Neil.
I think it was too. I don't think it was me.
Okay.
Judge Neil and Judge and Joe Mccone.
Yeah.
But we actually changed the the Packery Channel Nature Park. It used to be just called Packery Channel Park. And it was under Commissioner Casillas in 2010. He wanted to give it the nature park designation, which was really forward thinking, because then from there, we could write our, you know, our master plan for that particular park to manage it as a nature park. And that's what that's what we've done. And while we've done all the habitat.
It's it's one of the most beautiful. It'd be lovely to have like a like a 360, like one of those virtual video tours.
Yeah.
That's something maybe you guys can put in the back pocket.
And and it's it's on our webpage, too. If y'all don't know, we got a new webpage.
It's fantastic. Thank you. Well, I'm again, my motion is to approve this grant award from the Texas General Land Office, Project of Special Merit. It's again, relating to the Living Shoreline Project and Public Access. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Good job, Scott. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, we're real proud of this.
Stick around. You have another one.
Yep.
Item number five is discuss and consider Coastal Parks' request for additional funding for fuel for underground storage tanks at Packery Maintenance Yard. And we have already established the funding source for this, but you can go ahead and let us know.
Yeah, this this is not a fun one. I just want to officially get on the record that in my 14 years as department head, this is the first time I have ever had to come to the court for help without making doing line item transfers in my budget and working with Dale's office. I just don't have it. I've got one of the skinniest budgets I've ever had in my since I've been here. And I was willing to do that because y'all needed help last year. And so but our fuel, my God, I mean, I stopped and put fuel in my county vehicle the other day, and 15 gallons of gas cost me 60 bucks. And, you know, we've had some, you know, just the guys have been I've been encouraging our guys in the and with our fleet vehicles to use the fuel tanks more than the fuel cards, because it's it's more expensive at the pump than when we buy it in bulk. But my fuel cost right now has gone up since this time last year. My diesel's up 50%.
Everybody, everybody.
Yeah. And anyhow, I just I just want y'all to know, I don't come asking this very lightly, because I usually I find a way to work within my own budget. And I'm sure Dale could testify to that. I very rarely ever I've never done this. So this is a very rare thing. And I promise you, it will always be a very rare thing.
I can recall a couple of times that you did, but it's okay.
Oh, okay.
So where we where we getting the money on this here?
So are they go ahead and identify the the source.
Yes, Commissioner, we're going to do it from the general fund. It's going to be part of that. We're going to do a transfer.
General fund?
That's correct.
Okay. In the is there a motion to?
What general fund? I mean, what is there any other source?
The general fund is the main funding source for all the departments mainly, Commissioner.
I know that we provide the budget to everybody, but I'm saying, this is not part of the budget. This isn't that one, something else. But so there's no other source that we can hit besides the general fund?
Commissioner Chesney could pay for it.
Yeah, like I do everything else. I'm not asking that.
I'm not throwing anything at Chesney. I'm just asking. So I need some answers.
County judge could help, too.
I'd be happy to. I'm the one that actually funded for the entire. We found the allocation for the 80,000 for the.
Fuel tanks.
For the fuel tanks.
That's correct.
Right.
That's correct.
But again, I'm happy to help. But again, the general fund is the appropriate place for it.
Yeah, I mean, it's like anything else that comes out.
Right. I mean, it's that's where it belongs.
Okay, well, the thing is, I'm asking that because every time we say something about the general fund, everybody jumps and hoops like we're not supposed to spend the money from the general.
Well, I think the question of the general fund is, does that take us over budget? Or does that take us? Well, that would be for Dale.
And obviously, I mean, we're using it because it's absolutely necessary. That's that's the main purpose of using it.
Everything necessary when we ask.
Yeah, that's correct.
Anyway, I just want to make sure that, I mean, when we come back to the well, and then I don't want to hear people saying, well, we want to take out a general fund, you know, it shouldn't be a problem, right? I mean, so.
Correct.
And then the 60,000 is just a guesstimate based on usage so far this year that you're going to have to use for the rest of the year.
Yeah, with all our heavy equipment and vehicles and everything.
It will be the cap?
Yeah, based on what what fuel's costing us now, too. You know, it wasn't costing us this much when we funded our fuel budget last year. Y'all know that.
Is there a motion, Judge? Did you make it the second?
Motion to approve. And there's a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign.
Thank y'all. This is important, too, because those tanks have become very strategic when we get into hurricane season.
Okay, stick around.
How many gallons do they hold?
9,000 each.
How many do you have?
I've got two. And right now, I'm down to less than 310 unleaded and less than 920 in diesel. So I'm really, really down.
What were those numbers?
It's each hold 9,000 apiece. And I'm down to 310 gallons or less than 310 in unleaded. And I'm below 920 in diesel gallons.
18,000.
Out of the 9,000 that those tanks hold that you normally. Okay.
Yeah.
Got you.
So they're pretty dry.
18,000.
And by 2030, you'll be talking, you know, electric vehicles. And so maybe these are not the these are not the.
Yeah.
You know, woes of the future.
If they can get a front end loader to work on batteries, you know, I'd be all for it.
You've seen you've seen some of those 18-wheelers they're working on electric. It's incredible. Okay, and boats for that matter. We're going to move on, Scott, but stick around. There's others that that could potentially affect your.
Really?
Coastal parks. The next one, discuss and consider the allocation of sales proceeds from the Alastair property in Port Aransas to county projects. This was the sale of property that the court approved not too long ago, maybe even two weeks ago, for final execution. And I had made the suggestion that those some of those proceeds be utilized for the boardwalk that I'm very concerned about at Briscoe King Pavilion, because the GLO doesn't like the Band-Aid. They want to make certain that that boardwalk is complete. And I think it's about a half a million dollar project all in all. Commissioner Chesney, you have some ideas for these proceeds? That's my idea is to dedicate some of those proceeds to that boardwalk at Briscoe King Pavilion.
The amount of the proceeds you're looking at?
The amount is 925.
Is that the proceeds?
Okay.
Was that what we got?
Jenny, do you mind confirming? 925?
There was probably some closing costs.
Could be a little less.
Yes. And then was that signed off on and sent?
Yeah, did y'all close?
It was. Well, we have not closed on it, but we have I've signed all the documents. Yes.
So Judge, my my strong feeling on this, and this is similar to one, a part of this is similar to what we did before when we when we bought the we sold, sorry, the port property, we were able to put a good chunk of that. In other words, that was over $6 million. And and so what I had brought forth then was to put a portion of that in the reserves for the county to benefit the county as a whole. About $3 million of that six-point, whatever, went ended up going into the county reserves, based on my request and the court's acknowledging that. And this that's where this stemmed from, too. I think anytime that we sell land, we ought to put some of it in reserve, use some of the money for reserve. And that's why I came up with the 35%. I think I put that 35%. I went back and forth on this a couple of times, and I'm looking for my.
Okay.
Backup on in the reserves. And then also have a strong feeling that some of the money should be used that we got out of Port Aransas in Port Aransas, just as just like, you know, if we end up selling other properties in other parts of the county, I think that that part of the county ought to benefit somewhat as well for for stuff that nature. And so my my suggestion on this was to allocate 30. What did I put in here? And I'm sorry.
I think you said 30.
35% and 65%.
35, 65.
35% go to reserves and 65% to be allocated to a an unfunded project by the in the coastal parks area in Port Aransas, but in the city of Port Aransas.
Can you get the gas from there and from that money there? Can you buy the?
Well, that I mean, I guess.
Well, technically, are you are you saying on your motion that 35% would go to GF? Or?
To the general fund reserves.
Okay.
Right. So 30, 35%. And that's kind of.
Well, it's different than the reserve the reserves as being.
No, to the reserves, to the.
To cash reserves.
To yes, cash reserves. That's general fund reserves. That's what I did with the the port sale. So I'm just trying to be consistent and do the same thing and and put some of that towards the general fund reserves in a manner that we've done it before. Dale can kind of I don't remember how exactly we did it, but Dale found a way to do it where it was.
I didn't realize you could just allocate to reserves.
We have a budget policy that y'all adopt every year that that requires us to record every sale of asset into a special revenue account. Y'all have a resolution that y'all pass every year.
Okay, so it'll just go.
Change of that resolution.
So we'd have to change that, Commissioner?
And I don't know how we did it the first time. So it was Dale, if you remember, we went through this where we ended up substituting some projects. I can't remember what we did, but it was just a so the I don't know the legal legality of doing it. I've got to get with Dale on it, because I can't remember how we did it the last time. But we ended up getting several million dollars into the to the reserves that way. And then, again, allot this to the coastal parks department with approval by the commissioners' court to do an unfunded project in Port Aransas based on that.
And what unfunded project do you think you might have?
I don't have that.
Do you mind if I ask Scott Cross what unfunded projects Coastal Parks has?
Well, they've got a big wish list. We'd have to pull out the wish list and see.
Well, I don't. Do you?
Yeah, I mean, well, I mean, yeah.
I don't know of one.
The boardwalk certainly needs to get fixed at some point.
In in Port A?
Yeah, no, that's in Padre.
Right, that's what he's saying.
Oh, in Port A. I don't really have anything right now, other than that 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 elevated restroom shower facility that was on the beach that we demoed down to the elevated concrete pad.
Would you accept that as a project? I'm I'm uncomfortable with not designating it to something, because we have so many concerns and issues that are countywide. And we need the time value of money is now. It's now.
I was just going to give the Coastal Parks Board a chance to weigh in. But if that's what Scott wants to represent.
Well, something like that.
Subject to the Coastal Parks.
I would agree with that.
I just wanted them to have.
We don't know. We don't know how there's we feel strongly, me and the board do feel strongly, there's a way to repurpose that elevated structure. You don't want to lose it.
For bathrooms?
Yeah. The GLO will never let you put it back there.
Okay, so how about can you make your motion? And again, I'm not certain that you can put him to reserves. I think that you need to say it's to a special revenue. But again, I don't understand how he how you're going to take special revenue and get it inside your 25%.
Yeah, basically, I think we substituted some projects. Dale will have to go back and look at subject to subject to the auditor reviewing it and coming up with a way that's legitimate and legal and above board. And but we've done it before with.
I think it was questioned before, to be honest with you. But I think that I think your the general premise is you want 35% to go into a special revenue and 65% to be directed to coastal parks for a future Port A project.
And if you want to.
Is that the building you were talking about?
And if we want to designate it towards that project, subject to the coastal parks.
That's an important one.
Is that the building you're trying to fix?
Well, we allocate this to a special revenue fund. We can tell the special revenue fund how to to fund the special, so we can definitely put it in there and and reserve it for this function. But but according to the resolution y'all passed during budget cycle, it tells me that I'm required to establish a special revenue fund and account for every sale of assets in that fund.
Right. I guess what I'm saying, Commissioner Chesney, is that your your goal is not achievable, at least the way we have it. You wanted it to go to general fund to help the county You wanted it to go to general fund to help the county have a stronger balance at the end of the year. That's not possible by our own rules, but we could, um, I mean, a- again, I mean.
We can, we can.
I don't know how that would work.
All I'm trying to do is put an amount of money to help the county as the whole, on the, on the whole, and if it's special revenue, again, we've done this before where the, we were able to figure out how to move some projects to where that money got put into reserves, and we put that money into that project. Dale, I think, you'll have to go back and look at it. The intent is simply to, to spread the wealth. That, that's really all I'm trying to do here, is, is to try to put some in for the, for the rest of the county, and then put this towards a project in Port Aransas, because it's money coming out of Port Aransas, just like if, again, if, if Robert sold, got something sold in, in his part, or John did, I would want that part of the county to benefit significantly from the sale of that property.
So why don't we just follow the rule for now, which is, you're going to place the sale of assets into the special revenue as per our own court policy, however, it's, and it's subject to at least the court's directive that sixty-five percent be transferred at, for a project that Coastal Parks determines, uh, is one that they would like to recommend.
In Port Aransas.
In Port Aransas.
Right.
Okay, and then at that thirty-five percent, I guess there might be an opportunity for the court to think that we could use that thirty-five percent revenue for another project in the county.
And that's.
And that's the only, that's the only way to really do it.
You used the word transferred, I don't think we.
Well, he's going to allocate, if you come with us to a, come with a project, like the restoration of those bathrooms.
Which I think is a great project.
Which is a great one, because it, that's, that's one that actually.
Public infrastructure.
Public infrastructure.
Yeah.
That, that is not, is, that is in disrepair.
And we've got to do it somehow, so this is at least a way to do it with funds that doesn't come out of the general fund.
Right, so let us bring another agenda item to a budget change order to work on that after you.
Okay.
Create that awareness with your park board. Typically, Troy Adler does listen in, but if he's not listening in today, create that awareness of what happened and transpired here today in court. Today, I think the best motion is intention gets documented for, for the clerk.
So Judge, I guess.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah, for the clerk, I would just make a motion, and you're saying, Dale, all of this has to go into special revenue, but then we can direct.
When y'all pass the further budget, that's to do that, then we can determine how the best to do this. If we have the ways to transfer thirty-five percent of the general fund, we can, we need to make sure we follow the order as is, then we can work the, the process out.
What we can say is, we would, I would make a motion to allocate all of the sales proceeds to the special revenue fund with the intent being that sixty-five percent of those will be then reallocated, subject to the auditor's approval, to, towards the project that we discussed.
Yes.
Coastal Parks signing off on, and the other thirty-five percent being allocated to the general fund or another project in other parts of the county that there is a need for.
That sounds good to me, I'll second that.
Is that good, Karen? Okay.
See, you didn't even know why you were staying, Scott, look at you there. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Okay, um, the next item is posted as, as discussing a set of status regarding the policy and procedures for wetlands mitigation pursuant to the engagement letter with Baker Watering LLP, but that's going to be an executive session item. So we'll hold on that one. The next one is discuss and consider ratification of premium pay under ARPA. That's the American Rescue Plan Act for law enforcement. Why? Because it's.
Clarification on it.
Sure, Jenny, would you let him, he wants to know why there's clarification on that.
Clarification on what we did.
Well, I think this is, Commissioner Gonzalez put this one on.
Yeah.
Um, and as far as advising the county on anything, I think you would probably want to have that in executive first, but.
This is just on the wetlands mitigation.
Right, it's a legal document.
Wetland mitigation and the, uh, the med, the mitigation bank. Those are the two things we hired him to do back in twenty twenty, in January.
Yeah, we're going to get to hear from him during executive session, since it's a legal document that has legal implications, it would be a good idea to hear from him.
What would be legal? We hired him to do two things, all I need for him to present those two things that were done back in twenty twenty, because we paid him in twenty twenty, you know, I mean, we paid him, uh, in October of twenty twenty, we paid him the full amount for creating those two, and I've never seen those two, and I've asked him for a copy of those two, and I haven't got it. So, uh, my question is still, were those two items done? Were they, were they produced, were they created, and we never got a copy of it? I mean, if, if we got a copy of it, it should have a date of twenty twenty.
So we discussed this at the last time it was brought up, and an explanation was given that it would be important to discuss these items in executive session, as they could have future impact on, in this case, the cease and desist letter, and we provided that explanation.
There's a connection there with the cease and desist letter, Judge, I'm sorry.
There is, and it was provided to us by our counsel, and.
I have no connection with the cease and desist letter.
It has actually a lot of connection.
Twenty, we hired him to do two things, and I just want those two things.
I understand, I understand, I think, I think if you'll allow him the opportunity to explain in executive session, that's usually where you consult with your county attorney or your outside counsel, you can get the answers to your questions and also the specifics, but we have le, I have legal questions that are obviously would impact Nwasis County, so at this time, we'll take that into executive session, and then if there's an opportunity to address items in open session, we can at that time.
So I'm, I'm a little unclear on this, too, because to me, um, there's a different, def, definite differentiation between the cease and desist and, and the mitigate, the wetland mitigation plan, because that was, when we hired the law firm, and I think I even made the motion, that was what we hired him to do, was to, to do a mitigation plan. I don't know where that, not the other stuff, but I don't know where that crosses over into.
Well, how about if we go to executive session and he can explain it?
Well, no, she was playing that.
No, I'm, I'm saying, I don't know where.
Well, we've already gone over this.
No, 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 this is just the wetland mitigations.
Okay, but the wetland mitigation policy, as was explained by our counsel the last time, has potential ramifications for the mitigation that you actually have a conflict of interest in. So I think we should pause.
I don't have a conflict of interest.
And go into the explanation.
Well, I don't have a conflict of interest.
Done back in twenty twenty, that's all I'm asking for.
I.
I'm not asking nothing to happen in twenty twenty-two, I'm asking for those two things we're supposed to do, which is, one is the mitigation bank and also the policy for wetland mitigation. And I haven't seen those two, I haven't seen those two items, he was paid in October twenty twenty, and I don't have them.
Well, he, he did provide us that plan that we had, so first of all, just for the record, Judge, I don't have a conflict of interest, I'm voluntarily recusing myself, so I want to make sure that's clear, because that's a very different legal term. Second, I don't want to have any discussion with him out here about the cease and desist, but I don't think it's attorney-client privilege to bring forth a, a, a mitigation plan, that I don't know why that would be, I mean, a, an issue.
Again, we're happy to discuss this in open session, but I, we have our counsel here.
Maybe he could answer why.
He could answer, he could answer, he could address, maybe not answer, but he could address whether or not we should take this up in executive session, and perhaps why, but you'd have to go to the microphone.
Yeah, I, I just.
And we can do that.
Yeah, I just don't know why we can't have that discussion publicly on the mitigation plan.
Again, it's almost like a rerun, we've literally had the same discussion, let's have here from our counsel.
That's okay.
No, it's not a rerun, Judge, go ahead.
Yeah, it is.
Why, why can't we have this discussion about the mitigation plan, not the cease and desist, but the mitigation plan? Why is that, why should that be something we should be concerned about in attorney-client privilege?
That's a question I need to answer in executive session, and I'd like to report on the other matter in executive session, because there have been very recent developments on that, that I, I think are, would inform the commissioner's decision on this very issue and other issues as well.
Okay, so there's nothing you feel like we can discuss out here in regard to the mitigation plan? Just the mitigation plan?
Twenty twenty.
Well, I, I, we may be able to discuss things about the mitigation plan in open session. I would like to advise the commissioners in closed session about the ramifications of their discussing these issues in open session. In other words, I need to advise the commissioners' court about what I see as the issues of bringing the mitigation plan up in those open session, uh.
And whether we want to, I'm, I don't.
And then the commissioner can make, commission can make a.
Right, I don't even know.
Commissioner can make an informed decision on that very issue.
Right, so.
And that's the same thing for the, I'm sorry, that same thing for the policy that was supposed to be, that was supposed to have been created back then, back then? We were supposed to have developed a, a mitigation policy for the county, you know, I never saw that.
Well, he gave it to us, I think.
No, but that, that was dated in March twenty twenty-two, I want to see the copy you did in twenty twenty, we paid you in twenty twenty.
If, if the commission is, is, uh, telling me that I need to answer questions in open sessions without hearing.
Is it your advice, is it your advice to do these?
Can I just, can I just finish?
Sure, sure.
Real quick, will you be able in executive session to distinguish, so that I can listen to part and not be involved in part? Because I, I do want to know about this, I do need to understand this mitigation plan, which is where we all started on this. So will you be able to, to separate that out, so that I can, because I need to, I'd like to know about that part of it?
I, I do believe I can parse it.
Okay.
And yes, it is my recommendation to the, to the commissioners' court, that both issues be taken up in executive session, certainly to hear about my report on, on the other matter.
I, I can, I can live with that.
Is, and what you're answering right now, what you're directing us or advising us, is that any different than what you've already told us?
Yeah, there have been a, a recent development that I'd like to.
I mean, your recommendation in general until hold up on discussions, isn't that been the recommendation to always keep it in executive session first?
That is correct.
Not to hold back, but to first advise, and then allow for public discussion as all executive session items are normally handled. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so we're not following anything different?
That is correct.
What would be advisable, or what we have done before in practice?
With regard to this matter, that is correct.
To this matter, thank you.
Okay, all right, so we'll move on for right now, and go into item number eight, which is the premium pay. This is a ratification of what we've already done, it's for the law enforcement, it does include the constables and sheriffs in Nwasis County under the collective bargaining agreement. This is the ratification of the premium pay under ARPA. I don't know who wants to take this.
I did this one, I'm sorry, this was a clarification, I, I don't think in my, when we did it before the last motion, it was pointed out that all I, all the motion that was made was for law enforcement that were included in collective bargaining, and that, the intent was to include the, or my intent was to include the constables and the sheriff in that as well, and so that would just be, my motion was to include the constables and sheriff
So.
Same motion.
So the elected officers.
Yes, ma'am.
The problem is with that, is I think that there was some discussion as to whether, I don't know if Treasury has given advice, but they had excluded electeds from ARPA.
Uh, they've been getting paid, they've been getting.
Well, I, I just know that we, we were waiting on that, we had made a request so that the Treasury would understand it. And I thought the sheriff had asked to be excluded, is he asking to be included?
When we first started the premium pay, all, all five constables and the sheriff agreed to be paid for the premium pay, and we made the first two payments for premium pay for those particular individuals. I know Hagerty's working with the Treasury to see if this is an allowable expense for a law enforcement officer, way of being elected official. Uh, this, even if, if it's not in rescinded, the, the amount of funds are very, very minimal.
Right, I just want to point out that Hagerty had already advised us that we have not had a final determination from Treasury on electeds.
Hey, Dale. I thought somebody, yeah, anybody that made above seventy-eight or seventy-eight thousand was, was excluded, right?
But y'all made sure law enforcement didn't meet that requirement, y'all said law enforcement didn't, that.
I'm talking about the sheriff.
He's, he's law enforcement.
I know, but doesn't he make seventy-eight thousand?
Law enforcement does not qualify for the one fifty, y'all made that vote, said we're not counting law enforcement that for the one fifty.
Well, it's been some time ago.
Yeah, y'all, the court said that for law enforcement.
Yeah, we did that piece work, correct, I was just worried about the, where we are on the final determination. We could always come back, I suppose, and just.
Judge.
Provide that, but I just wanted you to know that was a concern.
Right, and Hagerty had actually given us the okay to do this originally, they may have changed their opinion, and, and that's certainly fine, that we can go back and look at. So I'm happy to make this motion subject to.
If you don't mind.
Subject to the auditor and the county attorney acknowledging that it's legal and legitimate to do. So, but I just want to include them in it, if they can be included in it, and then if they can't, then someone needs to explain to them why they can't.
Right, and just to remind you, the reason, the confusion here is that what Hagerty helped us do is overcome the one fifty and overcome the seventy-eight.
There's got to be a distinction on this, when, last court we had, we, we moved the collective bar agreement, as well as cadets, to a, a retention pay, not premium pay. So we cannot do a retention pay for elected official, because they're always, always retained, so this, they must stay as a premium pay for those five elected constables and the sheriff.
That's correct, so that's the distinction.
Subject, right, and that was a new distinction that was made from the la, at the last time we did it. Um, because prior, prior to when we did this four, five months ago, Hagerty said we could do it the way we did it, and then it changed, and that's fine.
Well, the final rules changed in January.
That's what I'm saying, they changed, but Hagerty gave, we did it based on Hagerty's original, then, then the final rules, rules change, things change, I get it. I'm just saying, whatever we can do, my motion is to include them in it, subject to it being okay to do, legitimate.
I think that's fine, I just, we'll get back to you on it.
Right.
All right, that way they know that the intention is there.
Right, that's.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, um, the next one is the funding of repairs to the office infrastructure at the medical examiner's office to provide a safe and efficient working environment after the elevated used during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. This was, um, part of our discussion from last time, Commissioner Gonzalez.
Well, we already voted on that one.
I, I agree, I thought we had already done fifty thousand for the ambiance, so to speak, the carpet.
I think, I think what I meant on this one here was to the, the, the backup that we provided last week uh, on the diagram that, uh, one, uh, one, ten presented, uh, I had, and I gave everybody a copy of it. Uh, it would cost five million dollars to, to add another section to the medical examiner and, uh, and, and demo with the main building and, and create the offices there. So, uh, they would, they would up, they really would upgrade the medical examiner's, uh, off building and to be able to function, and since we get a new medical examiner, I mean, I think this is probably the time to do it, so.
So, um, are you interested in showcasing what you have right now?
Sure.
Um, the, I have multiple thoughts here on this, and I'd like to see what you have and, and.
I gave it to you.
No, I'm talking, Juan's going to come up and talk about it. Um, the, the issue here, that's what's going to be better, he's got it on a thumb drive. The, the issue here is that, um, the medical examiner's office is a medical facility, and we have a new medical examiner coming in, in July, and it seems to me that before we do anything, he should be the one to assist us in formulating what this office needs from an infrastructure point of view. In addition, we already have the Smith Group retained, literally, we have a contract with them. They are experts in the field of forensic medical examiner's offices, and I don't understand how this happened, because, again, there was with no consultation of a medical professional or anybody who has medical expertise. This is premature, but, but very welcomed, it's a welcome to be able to do it, but it's premature.
Also has that background.
So, so we already have the Smith Group, and I believe that the hiring of CLK was not, was very premature and, and quite frankly, not done in the spirit of, um.
What didn't say we hired, they're not hired, you know, this is why we presented this, so that we can talk about it and see what we want to do, you know.
Well, if we're going to use.
Might be okay, but maybe they're too expensive, maybe we need to go to the next level and get what we need to get.
Well, let me, let me just suggest that if you're going to use federal funds, you have to follow the federal rules, which is two CFR two hundred, which would require this to be RFQ'd the way we did it with the Smith Group. The Smith Group is the county's go-to architects on the medical examiner's office, and so this is, they are the ones that have the expertise, so again, I'm happy to see it, happy to discuss it, but I'm going to ask that this be tabled, because it's, it doesn't even have the blessing of our current chief medical examiner uh, who has been hired to come in in July, and we have not made an analysis of whether this would be chasing, you know, putting good money in a bad building, um, so I think.
It's not a bad building.
Well, I think it's already been analyzed by engineers to be a bad building, it's already been ranked as a high priority. Again, we might need to have.
But not the outside.
It would be nice if I could finish, it, it's already been ranked as a building that needs to be replaced, and so I have concerns about putting in that amount of money to this building, and not a new building, but I agree that if there's infrastructure problems, we would want to correct those. But again, we already have, we went through the time trouble and expense of hiring the Smith Group, and I don't understand how CLK got brought on, uh, because that, it doesn't meet the requirements, uh, the federal requirements, and it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not in the spirit of working with this new chief who wants to build a new office. I would ask that we listen, uh, to Juan, because he's gone through that trouble, but that you take all of these great plans, and on July eighteenth, you work with our new chief medical examiner, and if they think, that if he thinks this is great, but why would we want to presume, none of us are doctors here, uh, we've not run a medical examiner's facility, you either need to find somebody who's done that kind of work, which, guess what, we already did, and we hired them, or you'll have them work with this group, um, in, in conjunction with those medical professionals. Again, Juan. in conjunction with those medical professionals. Again, Juan, go ahead.
Commissioner, Judge and Commissioners, this is our some exhibits that CLK put together. The first exhibit is the existing conditions of the facility, where you have your autopsy and also your administration, where you can see the blues, where they do the, more of the autopsy. And then the orange on the bottom part is more of the administration offices, where they have their conference room and their main entrance. The second exhibit is just a blow up of the existing facility, and it's approximately about 5,000 square feet total. The next exhibit, please. This is, in talking to CLK, this is a proposed, on the left-hand side would be the proposed facility, which is approximately about a little bit over 5,000 square feet. But this would be where all the autopsies, new refrigeration. And we would be able to tie in the new facility with the existing facility and then come back and phase out the existing facility to create office spaces. Next exhibit, please. And you can look at the bottom part, where the square footage, the, on the tables, the, scroll over to the right. The administration building would be of 5,000 square feet, based on phase one and phase two. And then the autopsy would be sixty-six hundred square feet. This would kind of just shows kind of like a sequence of construction if this project would, if the court would go this route. It would be phased out. In other words, you would do first the autopsy of the new building, tie it into the existing building, and then recommend to phase it out with the red. Start demoing that portion of the existing facility. I'm sorry, do a face, the blue portion, and then come back and do the red portion of the existing facility to create a new office space. Next slide, please. And then this would be the layout, where you do the, I'm going to call it the top part of the existing facility. You would come back and renovate the bottom part to create office spaces and also a conference room. On the first part, they would create a break room, some administration offices. And next slide. And this would be the whole new facility together. So in other words, you would have a brand-new autopsy building tied into the existing facility with the administration offices. Next one. And this would be kind of like a recommendation of the parking lot. Scroll out a little bit, zoom out a little bit. You would create some new parking lot in front of the existing facility and also of the new facility, and repave pretty much the whole surrounding of the of the facility itself. In other words, clean it up of the pavement. And the cost estimate, opinion of probable cause, based on CLK, to renovate and to do a brand-new building, you're looking about five mil. And by the time you put all the new equipment, new office desk and furniture, and do some testing for engineering and also for the architect, you're looking about total of seven mil total.
Seven?
Yes, sir.
Juan?
And then, and real quick, I know we had talked about the previous work, or the work that we're going to be doing right now as part of the, I'm going to call it the semi-renovations of the facility, where we're going in there, we're going to be doing the ceiling grids, new painting, new flooring, new lighting. I think right now, if I can say the number, I think we're totaling up to about forty-two thou- forty-six thousand dollars and doing, and kind of-
The ceilings?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And I think what we're looking also on the existing facilities, I know replacing some awnings, some additional costs. We're looking at also, you know, doing some paving work. We're on the back end of the building so that when they're driving up, you don't have that, some potholes. And clean it up and also do some of the parking lot right there in the front, make it ADA, and make sure that we're meeting those requirements. And that's not including that forty-six K. And then we're also cleaning up the fence, the fence and the gate operator. We're going to also include that as part. Commissioner, I know that wasn't part of the last items that were discussed the last time. But we're also going to go in there and replace the swipe cards. Those already all deteriorated. And then also the fencing in the back, that's already leaning. We're going to go in there and start fixing that up and re-stretch the wire. And then also the landscaping. We're going to go in there and take out the rock that's all around the building, put in some irrigation, and put in some new grass and some landscaping to kind of clean it up a little bit. I think if you look at the total cost of that, you're probably going to be looking under a hundred K total.
So the first forty-six thousand, we've already approved?
Yes, ma'am.
And so you're asking for the additional forty-six thousand today? I mean, not forty-six, but to whatever it is, the delta of all of the other items.
I would say total about a hundred K.
Total about a hundred, so.
Total.
So.
Or less, I mean.
And have you had the opportunity to check with Dale or Teresa to see where those additional, let's just call it fifty thousand, could come from?
Not yet, Judge. We're, this is, we're working on, we haven't, we kind of went out there and walked around and determined, you know, what we can do in order to get it up to-
So Dale, do you have a source that you could, I know I'm putting you on the spot here, but basically it'd be another fifty thousand. We've already approved fifty thousand. Is there another opportunity here for this fifty that Juan is mentioning for these infrastructure improvements?
Well, the improvement, normally it would come out of fifteen-seventy, which is your building superintendent funds for your building maintenance or repair services. But the last time it was, that was getting very short of funds.
Okay.
For this fiscal year. So the funds, we had to probably find them and fifteen-seventy is a general fund.
Would you be willing to, you know, we could, we could, again, look, at least give us the opportunity, since we didn't know what the dollar amount was till right now, give us a chance to find those extra fifty thousand so you could put it on an agenda item next court for approval?
And Judge, if I can recommend, I don't, you know, I know Dale said that we're getting on some of our building funds, but if I can use our building funds, we'll take care of the additional fifty thousand.
Okay. All right. That seems like a fair deal. So I'll make the motion to-
And just to keep the process going.
Right. My only concern here is that I didn't get to hear you, or you're going to kind of do most of this work all in-house?
We're doing some of it in-house, Judge. Where some of it's going to be done by contractors.
Contract.
Yes, because that way we can get the project, our guys are busy right now. So we're going to try and get all of this done by contractors.
By contractors?
Yes, ma'am.
There might be a little bit of split because I was hearing that there's some repair of the roads and stuff. So that's a different code. It's repair maintenance of buildings and grounds, and the other was of equipment. So there's different codes.
Right. And I don't think this is a problem, but one of my questions is, so we own the building, but we don't own the land. So I think that, I'm certain they would be happy for the upgrade. But would you also please coordinate with the hospital district?
Yes, ma'am.
Because they own the land and they would need to be consulted in all of this efforts. But as far as the total hundred thousand dollars, which is really just fifty, because the court already appropriated the fifty last court, how about if we make the motion that we approve of the work, subject to a little bit of refinement of how these dollars will come, and you could report on that next time?
Yes, ma'am. I'll coordinate with Dale and also with the hospital district just to make sure.
So that's my motion. Do you have a sec, is there a second?
Second. And also the hospital district knows, I already met with Johnny Hip, and, you know, he's got everything that we have. So they're going to look at it.
Okay. Well, at any rate, Johnny's not the board.
No, I understand.
The board needs to be, it needs to be an agenda item. It needs to be an agenda item. And we don't-
We understand. He knows that.
Right. We do projects jointly. And so all those in favor signify by saying aye. Okay, so the motion, Commissioner, is last court, we approved fifty thousand dollars for what I would call the ambiance pieces, the paint, the carpet, the ceiling tiles, the flooring. Now, this motion is to do these additional infrastructure pieces that would include irrigation, paving, awnings, landscape, cleaning of the fence. Juan, what else did I miss?
The car readers.
The car readers.
I'm sorry. And the funding source was?
Juan is going to work on his, he's going to do a little, probably a parcelling of the, both the road fund for the pavement and the building maintenance for the building.
I'm good. Thank you.
All right. And I've got the motion, and Gonzalez has the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Juan. Appreciate it.
All right. And then the next, I'm actually going to ask the court to recognize that at one o'clock, we have a scheduled interview. And this is a good time to take a ladies' break, a bathroom break for everybody. And so it is twelve fifty-seven. By the way, that particular item is noticed. Give me just a second to find it. Where is it?
In executive.
In executive only? Okay. So I'm going to have to go into executive session. So let me do all that right now. It's twelve fifty-seven PM for the record. And I'm giving notice that Commissioners Court's going to go into executive session to discuss matters listed on the agenda when authorized by provisions of the Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code.
So Judge, are we doing all the executive session?
I was just going to do the PIO.
And then come back out?
Well, I mean, I'll take y'all's consideration. I'm going to go into executive session. Well, I'm open to both. I just want to make sure that I give the magic words. And then we could do, we could have our pick.
Yeah, I mean, we could, just so that everybody kind of knows what to expect. So I'm fine with just doing the PIO and coming back out. I just want to let the audience and the people know that, how long we might be in there. That was all I was trying to gather, get for that.
Got it. Well-
How many PIO were you interviewing?
Just one.
But if we're all together, we may as well just do executive session, don't you think?
I, either way, I'm just-
I think we should.
I'm fine.
I think we should. And we have to come back in and out. All right. And so, again, just so you guys know, I've given public notice that we're going to go into executive session. We're authorized to do so, as I said, under the Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. And also in accordance with the authority of the government codes that are listed in the different sections that I'll list now for you, 551, oh, seven-one, seven-two, seven-three, seven-four, seven-five, seven-six, eight-six, and eight-seven, we'll hold an executive session to consult with attorneys, including matters related to litigation, real property, gives, personnel matters, termination, county advisory bodies, security devices, economic development negotiations, and other matters that may be discussed in executive session. Upon completion, we can take any item up in open section, open session that is deemed appropriate on items discussed in executive session. And again, I think I mentioned it, but it's twelve fifty-nine PM. So we are gavelled out. We're going to ask everyone to clear the courtroom that doesn't need to come back on the record if it's okay, Kara, at four-four-seven PM. And so what we've got here is, we're just coming out of executive session. And I'm going to kind of call them in, I'll try to do it in some semblance of order, although there's some tables as well. There's a motion to table item C and D at this time. Is there a second?
I'm sorry, Judge. I couldn't hear you.
Okay, item C and D at this time on executive session, and they correspond, Kara, with agenda items, agenda items eleven and twelve. So the motion is to table at this time until-
And probably thirteen also.
And thirteen.
They're all kind of related.
They're all kind of related.
And just, yeah.
And E, table.
And so we'll table those.
Eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
And just for the record, because there's no availability of the person related to that item to be here today.
That's correct. Till the twenty-fifth. Due to the, yeah. Correct. And would, is there a second? I don't know if I heard it.
I don't know who made it. Yeah.
There was. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. There is a, an action on case number 221, CV 210, George Martinez versus Nuñez County. And is there a motion regarding the settlement demand?
Motion to reject.
All right. I'll second. And to allow the county attorney to continue, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
Were you going to table fourteen also?
Yes, I'm going to do the, a table to, item number fourteen, which was also brought into executive session, Kara.
Motion to table.
And I'll second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Those same sign? No, till the twenty-fifth.
Sorry.
Sorry. And. And so if we're kind of, hold on, let me just cross off these. So.
Sixteen.
So back on regular agenda, Kara, I'll come right back over there. But on regular agenda, that takes care of ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, because sixteen was the George Martinez. Okay, just to kind of, for clarity. You with me? Okay, that clears our regular agenda. Now I'm going to go back into executive session and tell you that there is also, well, hold on. It's the next one. It's, we can take it up when we get to human resources, or we can do it now on the PIO.
PIO.
That's under human resources. You want to, let's just wait, I guess, till we get there?
We had to decide, we had to vote.
Oh, we didn't.
Well, I know, but I'm saying there's an actual agenda item, F1. You want to do it when we get to F1?
Sure.
All right. So let's move to grants. There's no other action, by the way, that I see.
What about seven? Were you going to-
Oh, seven.
Bring back seven or no?
That's right. That's right. Hold on. Got seven. Seven is that, well, we said that the directive is to bring back on the twenty-fifth or as soon as possible. Sort of the pros and cons, if you will, of a mitigation policy for Nuñez County outlining-
And also written, written, the written, uh, are you going to put them in writing to this, his litigation?
Right. But he's going to submit that to the county attorney. Okay. And so it's not really a, I mean, it's just a, it's just a, he's going to bring it back to us on the twenty-fifth. Or whenever the court, whenever the county attorney's ready to notice it again. I think I prefer that. Okay. And then with that, we are going to move to grants. And there is an approval of amendment number one with the Texas Water Development Board relating the master plant drainage study. And this is a request from the Texas Water Development Board to amend by this amendment to clean up something in the original contract document, which was the language on geographic identity for DD2. They had included the city of Driscoll inside DD2, and that's not correct. And there was also some-
Well, it was correct. It was supposed to be. But we took them out, somebody took them out. I mean, but the original one was included them, so.
Well, this is a request by the Water Development Board. And in order for the contractors to get going and get paid, all we're doing is the ministerial act. What happens is that all state agencies use DocuSign. So in order to create the amendment-
So are you going to eliminate Driscoll completely?
No, no. There's no elimination. It's just making certain that the geographic restriction is included inside the amendment. It's to help. And it's the request of Water Development Board. And they provided the information to Public Works and to us. And again, it's very important that we clean it up so that the people can get started on their contracts. I mean, it's ministerial at best. It's, all it is, is them asking us to correct it.
But, okay, they're the ones requesting it?
They're requesting it. Absolutely.
Or requesting it from them?
They are requesting it. They said they made an error in the DocuSign version. And therefore, in order to send us a new DocuSign, they need us to acknowledge that they're going to send us a new DocuSign. That's what this amendment number one does. And it's outlined in the backup documentation. So I'll make the motion to get this to Water Development Board. And of course, once we sign it, you'll get another copy of it. It'll probably be an agenda item. we sign it, you'll get another copy of it, it'll probably be an agenda item as final execution. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, on Public Works, you are up, Juan, with TechStot, uh, regarding a resolution to approve advanced funding for the H-SIP program and the projects that were awarded to Noises County.
That's correct, Judge, uh, this is just, uh, an advance funding agreement between the county and, Noises County and, and TechStot, uh, these are for, uh, projects, uh, to put some advanced warning signs, uh, in some of our county roads, uh, and this is a grant money that was, uh, I think it was last year, that was, um, uh, provided to the county, uh, for this purpose, so we're recommending the, uh, uh, the approval of the, uh, advance funding agreement.
Okay, and also, it's the second part, you're also asking us to, uh, recommend, um, to authorize the recommendation of bidding of these projects.
That's correct, that's correct, Judge, we're recommending them, uh, for, for bidding, uh, the project, uh, and the, the bidding process is, is handled by TechStot.
Correct. So, it's a two-phased motion, and I'll make the motion to do both, to enter into the advance funding agreement with TechStot and to authorize the recommendation of the bidding process. There's a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, if you'll recall, earlier, D-one was placed into consent, so we've already terminated, uh, that item, and then we'll move on to the E items, they're all Dale from, oh, no, we got, I'm sorry, HR left, but, um, Dale, take us through.
I wanna table, uh, E-one.
All right, there's a motion to table E-one, is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, Commissioner?
I haven't had time.
This is the third time you received this.
The third time?
Yes.
Well, I haven't had time to go through, Dale.
The last three courts have even, may provide this to you.
Well, I'm sorry.
It's the third time we've been tabled.
I think, I think the issue for Dale is that he's trying to close out his fiscal year of twenty-one.
He's right, close out fiscal year, we're just trying to get this approved, this is the third time it's been tabled, and, uh, this is the third time I've provided this to you.
Well, I'm sorry, there's some bills here that I have questions.
Okay, well, um.
Okay, so we'll be.
There is a table, um, there's a motion, I have to recognize the motion, is there a second?
Again.
And, and, okay.
Okay, and.
And then I'd asked, I think, Dale on that about, pull, about the food, and pulling all that out?
All that information's there.
Out?
It's all there.
No, no, um.
Separately.
How can I, yeah, how can I vote on it separately? That's what I.
For this, they, these are all credit card transactions, these transactions already been done, most of this information you've been requesting for was discussed about five courts ago, when we had this issue, we come before the media.
I get that, I'm, I'm saying, I've reviewed it, I'm not making that same discussion, but I'm saying, um.
And also, this is a report.
The transaction's already, they've already been paid.
You're not voting on the transaction, that's already occurred, this is just the report.
But we're approving it, and I have some issues with some of the food charges, so.
I know, but you're just approving the, the discussion of the report.
I, I, I think I sent you an email, Dale, and said something to, and I go back and pull it, and said something effective, how do I, you know, how do I vote differently on the, the food issues that I have, that I don't think we ought to be buying food with taxpayer dollars?
But you did that already, this is not the approval of the thing, this is the report that showcases what the report is, you can't, why would you vote against the veracity of the report? That, the transaction occurred, you already registered your vote on the transaction, this is, this says, this report is accurate, you're, you.
Is this the second report you're giving us, Dale?
The third.
Third time I've given it to you.
I mean, as far as the, this, the food report is.
Yes.
Second?
Third time.
Is this second?
It's the third time I've given this report for this, 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 this month.
The financial or for the food?
The financial, it includes the food, that, all this is, is a report for the items you're asking for, the one transaction, and, and this is the breakdown of all the transactions, of who has a P-card, and then I ran the transaction for all food transactions for last fiscal year and current fiscal year.
Yeah, and to be clear, what you object to, Commissioner Chesney, so that we can clear, it, you object to FEMA public assistance, which is a federal-funded program, uh, you object to that taxpayer dollars being, funding these foods, because it's not Noises County taxpayer through their ad valorem, it's our federal funds that are being used to pay for these foods for the volunteers.
I'm trying not to, like, get into another battle.
I know, but I'm just trying to make sure, 'cause you, it's kind of misleading when you say the nu, the taxpayer, the, the Noises County taxpayer is not paying for this food. FEMA public assistance pays one hundred percent for food that was provided for vaccinations.
That's still taxpayer dollars.
Well, it is, but, but again, complain to your congressman, because the Noises County taxpayer, okay, the FEMA allows for it, and FEMA one hundred percent provided for it, and that transaction, you've registered your vote, this is the financial report that accurately reflects what happened in the month of September. I mean, abstain if you don't want to, to approve the, agree that it's, it's kind of silly to not approve that, which is real, I mean, this is the actual report that our auditor has, is presenting to us.
That's fine, I'll abstain.
Okay. Um, well, sorry, but I think he had a table, so I gotta go back. Uh, motion and a second, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, opposed, no, no.
What, what was the motion?
He wants to, he wants to table this report again. Like, bring it back next, next week, or two weeks from now.
Two weeks.
So he can have time to review it.
And these are only, I'm sorry, I just wanna be part of the discussion before voting, so this, this is just to clarify what's been spent, but I guess the, the objection, if you, if anyone can help me better understand, is to, um, just because it, it was spent the way that, that it was, and this is more, I guess, a policy reason not to support it, or?
I, I'm just giving him time to, to do it, I mean, the report's, no offense, but the report's late anyway, it's September from twenty-one, we didn't get the first report till April, so we're, it's behind and coming anyway, he wants more time to read it, I'm just giving him more time to read it, and I'm just gonna abstain later because of the, now, and I do have a question too, though, but I don't wanna interrupt John, is, has FEMA reimbursed all this food money?
We're still working on it.
So that hasn't been, aren't reimbursed yet?
But it's already been approved, we have a letter of approval, FEMA PA for vaccinations, and it's already been submitted, it's pending in the portal.
Can we have a copy of it?
Yeah, I was gonna ask.
So Dale, has it been reimbursed as?
No, because that, that process is, is a, is a, is a process that's in the, in the, in the pipeline, but it has been already, we get, everything gets pre-vetted for eligibility, you don't even get to submit unless they permit you to submit, I mean, that's how.
You just said it was reimbursed, I had not.
I said it's reimbursable by FEMA.
Right, but you said it had already been reimbursed.
Well, some has been reimbursed, and some has not yet, because it's in the portal.
Just clearing it up, so not all of it's been reimbursed.
Again, I'm, again, what, there's confusion here, this is a report that accurately reflects what our expenditures are, that's all this report is, and if you want more time, then that's the table, that's the motion.
So, it, may I ask for legal clarification, what, what if we do not accept that, this report, what does that mean? Say ultimately, in a, in our next meeting, we finally get to vote on it, and we, what, say a majority of the court votes against it, what does that mean for us, what does that do?
That's a new question I can look into for you, I'm happy to.
Can you, please, if we can maybe get it before then, just, uh, just curious more than anything, 'cause I, I mean, I hear the, the concern, we've had it brought up before, and so I understand that, but my, my worry is, uh, you know, if it's a policy decision, then we need to change the policy on what's allowed to be purchased with the P-card, but if it's already done, and it falls within our policy, then to me, it seems like it's just, we need to just accept it, so that, that would be, you know, I'm trying to take a little bit more practical approach to it, is, I mean, I hear the concern, but if it's done, it's done, right, I mean, we can't undo the charges, I mean, we're gonna be obligated to pay, or we already have at this point, is that correct, Dale?
That's correct.
Okay, so, I'm, I mean.
Dale, how do we know it's in the portal?
Yeah, to ask grants, grants submits the payment through, uh, the FEMA PA, it's a, the grant, grant application.
Do they get something in writing from them?
You know, it's, it's in our grant portals.
I, I'd like to have a copy of whatever it is.
And I have to ask Dale, 'cause I, I mean, you're usually pretty calm, cool, and collected, but how often, aren't, aren't these reports supposed to be due quicker than we're getting them?
We try to get the balances, because as we get the, towards the end of the year, the, if we go to the, the next reports, we can't give you balancing informations, and that's the most important information we can provide to you, we're, we're working on, uh, revising this report, so we can get it to you on a monthly basis as required, but as we said before, once, when, the information we provide you won't be very accurate.
Right, I'm just saying, my understanding is that you, we're supposed to get these reports a little quicker than we're getting them, since we didn't really get this.
And we will, 'cause then we're gonna start giving them to you very quickly, but again, the information won't be very accurate.
So, respectfully, I mean, it was behind, we, we didn't get it until, I'm gonna say April, and it's a September of twenty-one report, so if Commissioner Hernandez needs a little more time, I, I think it's inappropriate for you to get real upset at him, since we're, since we're waiting patiently and not getting upset at you, when we're not getting the reports until six months after the, the end of the day, so I mean, I mean, let's be fair here, guys, I mean, i- it may just be a report, but people still, when you vote on a report, that means you're voting to approve a report, and if, and if one commissioner hadn't had a time to look at it, with thousands and thousands and thousands of pages of stuff we get, I, I've got no problem letting him look at that and having the time to do that, just like I don't get on, I don't get on Dale for the fact that, you know, this September twenty-one report should have been gotten to us a lot sooner than it did either, so I mean, let's just, I think we just need to move on, and everybody calm down, and let's go home.
I'll drink to that.
Irony, you've already voted, you've already voted.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks. Discuss and consider postage as an addition to vendor payments, exceptionless, not requiring Commissioners Court preapproval, so this is part of our laundry list, Dale, you'd like to have postage, I'll make the motion to include postage.
Yes, the only reason, because some of the time we had, uh, last, last time with the, with some, uh, large jury, uh, out, going out and, and some of the stuff, it required us to do a very large postage balance, and, and a lot of the time, we have a lot of advanced notices, and that, not particularly issue, but sometimes we, we have to have it right away, and our, our postage machine requirement, they require a check almost immediately before they'll give you anything.
Got it. Okay, so, I've got the motion for postage to be included, is there a second?
Again.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And we've got a budget change order, it's number eleven.
Judge, I would just make a motion that we extend the meeting till five-thirty?
Is it after five?
It is, ma'am.
I'll take this as a second, uh, to five-thirty, is all, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll go to five-thirty PM for the record, go ahead on budget change order number eleven, we are most.
Budget order number, uh, number eleven, and this is a, a very small one, where the, there's only two departments that are requiring some changes, Department of nineteen-hundred and Department of one-eighty, nineteen-hundred is because, uh, we started getting some of our new leased equipment, we didn't have the, um, uh, the equipment to go inside this, and we needed some different repairs and, and maintenance, uh, we're moving the balances around to cover the cost, it is, is a little high, but as you know, sometimes we get a lot of our cars in quickly for our leases, and, and the lot, the equipment going in there is very expensive, and, and we'll make sure that's appropriately budgeted next year. For coastal parks, we have a little bit of, uh, expenses going back between the two, uh, areas, whether IB McGee and, and Pottery Bali, and they need a little, a little more travel expenses related to that expense, the funds are available there in professional services, uh, this is the information they provide to me, I reviewed the information, it appears appropriate, and I provided budget change order number eleven for your acceptance and approval.
Okay, I, I motion to approve order number eleven, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we've got twelve.
On budget change number twelve, uh, there's a couple of large items for juvenile, they have a lot of overtime for, because they have several vacancies similar to our, our jail, uh, and they need to move, uh, cover some of their costs, they do have some savings in their salary regulars to cover these, uh, these out, overages, and we have a small little tra, travel expenses for our mechanical maintenance, so we're moving that from Department fifteen-seventy, the funds are available for these requests, we have reviewed these, and they, they are appropriate, and we submit budget change order number twelve for your acceptance and approval.
And I motion to accept, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then the capital project budget change order is next, it's number one-oh-eight.
Mostly, they're just, uh, adding the additional, the balances we have to, to create the project codes to, to be able to track the expenses going into the R. injury savings that we currently have with ABM, uh, those are all the new projects, and they're coming from the nineteen-twenty-four unallocated funds that we, we have, the other balances are in nineteen-twenty-five, which is our two-two thousand and twenty-one COs, the only thing new is our, our, our Packery, uh, uh, maintenance yards, fuel tanks that we just had, uh, as new, uh, these are, these are bal, balances that are available for, for, for what, what we're asking for, and I accept, I submit, uh, project change order number one-oh-eight for your acceptance and approval.
All right, I'll move acceptance of project, um, change order number one-oh-eight, it's a capital project change order, is there a second?
Who, who capital project was that?
Which ones?
Which capital project was that?
We just did that one, that was the one-oh-eight.
The Packery maintenance is, uh, on, on, on twenty-one COs, it's, uh, the, the fuel tanks we were mentioning earlier, the, the, the additional fuel, fuel tanks need to be replaced or repaired, so that, that we're adding a new one there, and, uh, the judge author, authorized the, the transfer of her funds.
Fuel tanks?
Yeah, the fuel tanks, yeah.
All right, so that's one-oh-eight, I think I've got the motion on the floor, and I'm looking for the second. Yes?
Second.
Quiet, they're getting quiet on me, I heard it, I'm not sure where, but I heard it. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next one has to do with the retention supplemental pay, and not, this is new verbiage, so we wanna make sure we understand it.
Sure, we, we went through all of our, our payroll processing that we needed to have, we made sure our software was working correctly, uh, we want to begin the retain, retention, uh, supplemental pay for our in, individuals for, under our collective bargaining agreements, as well as our, our, uh, cadets, uh, this is twenty percent, and it's based on their hourly sa, it's a set amount based on their, their pay, it's not based on ours, there's no requirements for the rules for the, the premium pay, this is a supplemental retention pay, uh, we're ready to begin, it'll be, it'll start on the, the sixteenth, which is the very, uh, May sixteenth, and they should receive the first check on the twenty-seventh, and they should receive a check thereafter every pay period.
Got it.
Every pay period?
Every pay period.
So, this is really just, um, do you need us? You need us to go ahead and make that motion?
I do actually, I want you to accept that we're, we're actually.
Accept it.
Except we're, we've got the process to be done, and we're ready to begin, and Except we, we've got the process done, and we're ready to begin, and we're ready to start.
All right. How long is this gonna be?
It's gonna be through this fiscal year, next fiscal year, because y'all, y'all decided on two years.
So I'll go ahead and make the motion to, to accept the retention supplemental pay.
Well, we haven't decided on two years ever.
Yes, we did. Last court.
We did?
So we, let's go ahead and make the mo, I'll make the motion to consent, to accept the retention supplemental pay of 20% for Nuñez County law enforcement employees with the collect, within the collective bargaining agreement, including cadets.
To increase it. Is that what you're saying, Judge?
No, it's just sort of the exception, acceptance of the actual program that he's already, that he's just outlined.
The procedures. We're now able to pay it as a supplemental pay through payroll.
Additional 20%?
That's the 20% of the retention.
The same thing we did. He's just talking about the process, like how he's gonna do it. It's gonna pay it every paycheck.
We changed it from premium pay to retention pay, and because the retention pay is a set amount, there's no hourly charge to it, we're able to actually pay it through payroll every pay period.
I thought we increased the amount.
No, we, we said 20.
It's 20% for two fiscal years.
The total amount's 40%, it's 20% over two years, for the two years.
That's the 40.
Yeah, and what, and so he's just asking us to accept the, accept it, and so now start calling it what it is, which is retention.
Second, if it hadn't been second.
It was by modest. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any approval of payments that need to be discussed with the public health?
Just some, um, routine expenses of getting the final expenses from our health department for a little bit of a, a, a salary and overtime and some general operating expenses. Uh, they're, they're, these are routine in nature.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion? Okay, I heard it twice, so I'll take that. Motion in a second. And, uh, the only discussion I have is that, do you remember when we did the transfer, there was vacancies? And I'm just curious if there's still vacancies, um, or if those are 100% filled? Do we know?
That we'll have to ask the city.
Okay, Jenny, I'm just looking for that information. There were whole.
We have not received any billing for the City County Health or 1115 waiver or, or any, uh, payment authorization for them to pay premium pay to the employees that were transferred.
Understood, and the other, and the follow-up to that is that, uh, I do want to make certain that, um, you remember there was that sick leave and vacation leave that we paid. Say it again.
We did pay that out.
And we've paid that out, and we plan to seek reimbursement from the hospital district?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, again, of the approval, the payments that were just mentioned, um, and are listed in item number seven, uh, through February 2022, signify by saying aye. Your approval. The motion is for the approval.
Aye.
I got a motion and a second, right? Yeah, so we're all ayes on that one.
Aye.
Okay, and so now we have two items to discuss with Julie. She's here. One of them is the applicant, the selection of the applicant to fill the position of PIO. And the second one is, um, has to do with, um, I'm guessing, um, I'm not sure, it, usually we don't downgrade, we upgrade, but you can explain that. And, um, but the first one is the application, I'm sorry, the selection of applicant to fill the position of PIO.
Wait till John's back, Judge.
Yes, that's fine. Can we go on to the District Attorney felony chief position? It's pay group 43 to 41, um.
They were just doing some reorganization and wanted to bring a position down that, um, they felt was not paid correctly, and so we're just correcting that.
And this request comes from the District Attorney?
Yes, from Angelica Hernan, well, from the DA's office, but yes, Angelica Hernandez, I believe, put this on here and was requesting that.
Well, you know, it seems like we're always asked to make certain those salaries are strong salaries, and we've done such hard and good work getting it to 43. I'm, again, why is, why are they doing that? I don't understand that.
If you'd like to hear from her, I mean, we can do.
I mean, I'm just, I don't understand why that, why we're taking the salary down for felony prosecutors when we just put them up.
Putting it somewhere else, maybe.
Are they, do you know what they're doing with it, or?
I, I.
The backup was, hold on, let me see. F2.
They're not losing, we're not losing, what's the score?
The big deal is that they came in here in force, a tour de force, asking for better pay, and I'm uncomfortable with lowering any lawyer's pay.
I move to approve it.
With the backlog.
I move to approve it anyway.
And also, um, it says they'll be salarizing, see if it's, um. All right, well, I, I hope they don't come back and ask for the salary increase because they certainly asked for, for that the last time.
It was a mistake or something. They just listed the wrong salary.
Are all felonies, uh, are this, is this consistent with their other felony prosecutors?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, well, then maybe that's the answer.
I, I, to listen, to answer Commissioner Gonzalez, I don't believe it's a mistake as to what was posted here. I didn't put this agenda on there. The DA's office put it on there, but I believe that is correct.
No, no, I didn't say you made the mistake.
No, no, I'm just letting you know that, that is correct the way they wanted it.
All right, so you're making the motion and you're making.
Subject to verification. This is what they want, I mean.
Yeah, if that's what they want.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure we're not doing it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, it was ayes. The motion was Gonzalez.
I second it.
And he seconded it. And, um, and then the last human resource item, uh, before we go into, um, closing for the day and, and into adjournments, is the discussing, consider the selection of the applicant to fill the position of PIO. And I'll just tee it up by saying that we've had, uh, multiple weeks where we've had different interviews. We had excellent candidates across the board. And, um, we, this position has been budgeted, I think, for a year and a half, and we're excited about having, um, this office filled and all the good work that can be, um, messaged, all the good work that happens in Nuñez County, throughout Nuñez County and throughout all the precincts, um.
I'd like to move to elect Tyler Thorson. That's my motion.
Second.
I think his name is Thorson.
Thorson.
Mm-hmm. Tyler Thorson.
Yes, ma'am.
There's a motion and a second to, uh, select Tyler Thorson, and, uh, as the candidate to fill the PIO position. And, uh, he seconded it. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, opposed, same sign. All right, um, we are gonna move to adjournments and memory.
Thank you.
You'll let Mr. Thorson know? Make sure he accepts, it's obviously conditioned upon him accepting the position, right? And so, um, we'll move to adjournments and memory, and I'll call upon Commissioner Valls at this time. I'm so, I'm so sorry. I'm thinking about Mr. Valls. Commissioner Modis.
Sure.
Thank you, Judge. I wanted to share, um, passing of Luis A. Valls. He was raised in Alice, served in World War II, uh, served in the Pacific Theater during World War II on the USS Jack Wilkie. Has also served in the Korean War. Um, he relocated to Corpus Christi after the Navy service and where he became one of the first Mexican-Americans to join the Corpus Christi Fire Department. He served there for 29 years and was one of the first to serve ambulance calls for the newly formed EMT ambulance program. He married Olga Benia in 1958 in Alice. They were happily married for 64 years before her passing, just three weeks prior to his passing. Mr. Valls was a proud member of the DAV, Veterans of Form Wars, Pan American Golf, and a loyal parishioner of Our Lady of Perpetual Help Catholic Church for over 60 years. Uh, he is survived by his sons, Robert, Richard, John, Ed, Rondy Valls. His sister, Bessie, brother, Andy Valls, and grandchildren and great-grandchildren. Uh, he was preceded in death by his parents, his beloved wife, and a brother who was killed in action during World War II. Also by two sisters and three additional brothers. His rosary service will be held this evening, um, at, um, the Angeles, Angeles Funeral Home, and he will be buried tomorrow at the Tulsa bin Veteran Cemetery. And so, in lieu of flowers, the family asks for donations being made to Catholic charities of Corpus Christi. My condolences to the Valls family. Thank you.
Do any other commissioners have any adjournments?
A little bit on, on Mr. Valls also that, um, uh, Mr. Valls probably right now is, have a big calling in his face, and, uh, now he's really joining his, his partner, his wife that passed three weeks ago, so now they're together. And, uh, and they really, really like to go gambling and, in, uh, in Cachada, and they used to love to ride the bus over there. And, uh, so, um, he will be missed, and he was very active in the community and, uh, always willing to help people out. So my condolences to the Valls family, John particularly, and his family. So, um, our prayers and condolences.
Do you have any adjournments of your own?
No, ma'am.
Do you have any adjournments?
No, no.
And Chesney, Commissioner Chesney, do you have any? Okay, I just have one. Um. I'm also passing these down to you all as well, that need to be done before you leave. So I, I've held on to this one because the last courts were either too long and we were racing out or too short, and I didn't feel like it was, uh, fitting for such a, a great, uh, public servant. Augustine Gus Leja Rivera was 81, and he was surrounded by his family and their love when he passed away peacefully on April the 11th. He began an extraordinary life in 1940 on October the 2nd in the humblest of settings, a barn just north of Port La Vaca. His father, Enrique Cortes Rivera, took the family to West Texas to pick cotton, but left his mother Rafaela Leja Rivera, who was pregnant and soon due, at Uncle's Farm where he was born. Early life was challenging as the family survived by working in the fields of South Texas, doing seasonal farm work and moving farm to farm. His mother bore 11 children, but three did not survive birth. Eventually, the family moved into the big city of Driscoll, and from the day Gus was old enough to work into the fields, until his passing, there was never a day that he was not working. Despite growing up with limited resources, there was always good food to eat and brothers and sisters and cousins and friends who loved to laugh and have fun. The bonds and love of family and dear friendships remain strong for Gus and terrifically, uh, charismatic throughout his life. He could instantly befriend a stranger, and he always without exception put family first. Gus attended public schools in Driscoll and loved learning, especially music, and he made friendships that lasted a lifetime. But as a student in a segregated school system, he was acutely aware of the systemic discrimination that kept Mexican-Americans from educational advancement. Instead of deterring him, however, the experience would shape and motivate him throughout his life to always work and fight if necessary to make things better. To never settle for less and to never accept being told something that told something couldn't be done and to never give up. There's so many beautiful things here. I'm gonna, um, move to some of the pieces that bring us to his life here in, um, Nuñez County. Gus was deeply committed to community service throughout his life, and while living in Driscoll, he made a lasting impact as a longtime Little League baseball and basketball coach, Cub master and scout master. He served as president of the St. James Catholic Church Men's Club, Bishop Driscoll Little League, Driscoll PTA, Driscoll School Board. And decades later, many of the players Gus coached in baseball still reverently called him coach when seeing him in public. As part of the lifelong drive to always improve himself, he enrolled and graduated from Delmar College Police, Police Science and Criminal Justice Program. He became a certified law enforcement officer and served as deputy constable in the Bishop Driscoll area in the early 1980s. This led to the opportunity of a lifetime for Gus when he applied for the court bailiff position with State District Judge Max Bennett of the 319th District Court. Dashing and confident and personable Gus explained his background during his interview, qualifications and desire to serve as court bailiff. The judge who had already made up his mind in 15 minutes into the interview had only one question for Gus. When can you start? This was the beginning of an exceptional career as court bailiff at the Nuñez County Courthouse, where he worked for Judge Bennett for 15 years and forged a special friendship with him that lasted until the very end of his life. After Judge Bennett retired, Gus worked as the bailiff for Judge Ida Brussel of the Title IV D Masters Court and always appreciated that special relationship. He, um, made many friendship with lawyers from across the courthouse and was well-regarded by the bar for his exemplary professionalism, genuine collegiality, and uncanny knack for being able to predict a jury verdict. He earned the unofficial moniker of the 13th juror. Over the past four years, Gus fought truly a heroic and painful battle with Parkinson's until he couldn't fight anymore. But he did, even at the end, he taught us all the virtue of never giving up and that life's joys are always worth fighting for. A person of faith for his entire life, uh, Gus believed he would ultimately be reunited with his beloved Carolina, but his indomitable spirit kept him from going gentle into that good night. And he raged against the dying of the light. In the end, though, as he began to accept his well-earned rest, he passed with family present and the words of two Timothy 4:6 through 8 and the lyrics of "I can see, I can see clearly now" to guide him home. The family wishes to note their deepest gratitude and love for Esmeralda Rivera, Gus's ever faithful companion of the passing of his beloved Carolina, devoted grandmother to his grandchildren. Steadfast loyalty, extraordinary compassionate efforts in attending to Gus over the past four years will never, ever be forgotten. There's so much more to say about Gus Rivera. I'm gonna leave this, uh, with the court manager in hopes that I can prepare a, a, sort of a formal adjournment so that I might present to the Rivera family in its entirety. Thank you for court today. Thank you for the memory of, uh, Mr. Valls and Mr. Rivera. We stand adjourned at 5:26 PM.